We're ready.
Are we ready?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we'll call to order the study session of the Newport Beach City Council. Today is August 9th, 2016. Madam Clerk.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
First item of current -- I'm sorry? I want to say anything? All right. First item of current business is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Do we have any comments or clarification? Seeing none. Item number two. Santa Ana Mountains to the Sea National Monument. Ms. Detwiler, I see you sitting there, so if you would enlighten us, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. Members of the council, I'm Laura Detwiler, your Recreation and Senior Services Director. With me is Recreation Manager Justin Schmellin. And our goal this afternoon is to give you a very brief overview of the monument. And Mayor Dixon, we are seeking some direction from you today. If the council is supportive of this, we'll come back to your September 9th meeting and ask for formal authorization for you to sign a letter and send off to Representative Ed Royce's office. So with that, a little bit about the monument. It does define a pretty succinct goal, and it's really to strengthen and elevate public and private stewardship of the lands. It's essentially historic Irvine Ranch lands, Santa Ana Mountains, and Cleveland National Forests. And those -- it's important to point out, too, that those lands are already protected. This is not seeking to protect any additional land that's not already set aside as open space. It's being called a new kind of monument for the 21st century, and it's essentially a transparent overlay over these designations of CNL and NNL. And he is seeking to introduce the bill in September of this year, and it does reach a little over 100,000 acres. And we do have some slides that we'll go over with you that will illustrate what those lands look like and how they are falling within the city of Newport Beach. So a little bit about monuments. They are designated by the federal government. We gave you a couple examples of those. The Statue of Liberty, California Coastal, Sand and Snow. There are 122 in total. This would be the 17th. We also gave you a graphic there about the different designations and wanted to relate those to Newport Beach. Open space would be something similar to Buck Gully that falls in the NCCP, which talks about how we manage and protect those lands. We also have Crystal Cove, which is a California natural landmark. And then also, all of the Irvine Ranch properties are considered a national natural landmark. Those designations do not go away with the monument. They essentially stay in place. And again, this just gives a virtual overlay over these lands and brings them into more national significance. And then with national parks, most are very familiar with those. They're typically fee-based recreation gathering places and traditionally managed by the National Park Service. So the benefits are many of this, but I'll point out a few. Again, it raises this land to national level. The other designations are pretty obscure. A lot of folks don't know about them or can't relate to them, and most do know about national monuments. It does ensure a collaborative effort among all of the landowners, and this is why Royce is seeking all of the stakeholders to actually get some support for the monument before he actually brings it forward in terms of proposing the bill. The one thing that it does allow us to do is really work on a regional level on issues that transcend our boundaries, like fire prevention, recreation trails, invasive species, and most importantly, how we all tie in together with the quality -- water quality of our bay. So this shows you the national monument in entirety. You'll see a majority of the lands are either in the green area or orange areas, national and/or county lands. Newport Beach has a very small portion of that, 267 acres, and that actually is considered Buck Gully. Newport Beach is to the bottom left of your screen. This brings the southern portion of the monument into focus. And again, county lands are in the orange, which falls within Laguna Beach. We also have the city of Irvine, which is yellow. The greens are state of California, as well as the blues are fish and wildlife and, again, Buck Gully, which is in royal blue. And so these are the lands that are within Newport Beach specifically. Buck Gully is the only property that we own within the monument. Royce's office is seeking out the other landowners in Newport Beach and asking for their support as well through this process. You'll see upper Newport Bay to the left, and then to the right, Los Trancos, and then Crystal Cove State Beach, which is in the lower green on the screen. So some key elements of the bill. All rights and authorities remain. There will be an advisory committee created, and all the landowners will have representation on that committee. No funding is required. It does not impact private lands, and does not create any new restrictions or fees for access to these properties. And again, places great emphasis on collaboration between all of the landowners. As a result, a monument plan will be put together. It sets out to complete that within three years of approving the bill. Newport Beach would have representation in putting that actual plan together. And then just a quick note about our general plan. We do have some goals and policies within the natural resources element that support this type of effort and talk about the importance of preserving and protecting open space for the community. Again, the benefits are many. It will strengthen our commitment to the land and its users. Also, it may provide some federal resources for management of the land. It most likely will increase visitors and tourism to the area. And again, most importantly, our regional coordination among all the partners. And we've listed some of the stakeholders here for you who have stepped forward and already shared their support with Representative Royce's office. This being a new time of monument, there are some unknowns. And when we studied the bill, there were some questions that we wanted to raise, not that I don't -- there are certainly things that we can overcome, but it is unique. It wasn't very descriptive about how that advisory committee would function. There may be some current concerns from folks not wanting this in their backyard. Having a national monument might be a little bit scary to some. And again, it wasn't very descriptive about the cooperative agreements, but certainly all things that I think that we can work through. We would like to take some recommendations from you if you have those and you're willing to support the bill. One of the things that we did find in consultation with our police chief is that we would ask that they would allow for non-emergency overflights at 240 meters. Right now, it restricts it at 250. And our police helicopter flies at about 800 feet, which is about 240 meters. So if we were to issue a letter to them, we would ask that they change that to 240. So again, we will come back in September if you would like us to. The bill will be introduced sometime in September. If passed, this local advisory committee would be formed, and within three years, they'll put together the actual monument plan. And of course, that would come back to this council for consideration as well. So with that, that was a very quick summary of the monument. I do want to thank the team that analyzed the bill itself. It was 28 pages long and pretty descriptive, and so we're here to answer any questions that you may have at this point.
Thank you, Laura. Mr. Curry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of my proudest achievements on the city council and as a member of the Orange County Parks Commission has been the dedication of open space in Orange County over the past decade. More than 20,000 acres have been set aside as permanent open space for the perpetual enjoyment of our community. It was an honor to be present when we declared this the natural national landmark, and now we're simply moving up the status a bit in terms of federal designation for areas that has already been designated. But this area will be preserved as open space for future generations of Californians. And I am so proud that we have a small part of this, but an important part of it in preserving this land for open space going forward, all the way from the mountains to the sea. So I'm fully supportive of this effort. I'm very proud of Congressman Royce for his leadership in doing this and for the great cooperation we've had from the Irvine Company, most notably, but from all of the property owners and the citizens in our community to support this effort.
Mr. Pieter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Laura, you kind of buzzed this real quick. Let's use Buck Gully first. Is that currently, as Mr. Curry indicated, a landmark designated area?
Not landmark, but it does fall in the NCCP, which stipulates how we manage and protect that open space.
The NCCP stands for what?
Natural Coastal Communities Coalition.
Right. So the federal government is not involved with that? The federal government is not currently involved with the NCCP?
I don't believe so, is it, Dave?
I'm sorry, I got to weigh in. The Natural Communities Conservation Plan, NCCP. Sorry, there are a lot of acronyms that we use. The federal government is involved in that. U.S. Fish and Wildlife is involved in it. So is --
Corps of Engineers.
Corps of Engineers, right. Because remember, it's all about managing a variety of habitat that would fall under probably three or four different agencies.
But they're involved even if we do something on city-owned property? If we are dealing with a Blue Stream or something like that as well, right?
Certainly. And California Fish and Wildlife.
Okay, so bumping this up to a monument status, what do the feds want to control and how do they want to control it?
I don't see them want it -- again, maybe I'm being naive. I don't see them wanting to control anything. I see this as an interest by the major landowner, in this case, the Irvine Company and some others, to get additional recognition beyond national natural landmark recognition. I don't know that the federal government, the U.S. Department of Interior or Park Service, reached out and said, hey, we would like that to be a monument.
So we have, using Buck Gully as an example, storm drains that empty out into Buck Gully. And we need to modify one. We're going to be dealing with the Corps of Engineers and federal fishing game, as well as state fishing game and coastal commission. Are we dealing with anybody else if it becomes a monument? Is there a Department of Interior guy now that we're going to have to deal with?
I suppose that's a possibility. That's not the intent of this bill. The intent of the bill, at least when it's written and its language, doesn't say there's a new land steward that's a party to the decisions. It suggests that the existing land stewards remain the parties to those decisions.
I mean, if they're going to overrule the coastal commission, I might be for it, but I suspect that it's going to be in addition to, not in replacement of. So what happens if Buck Gully, for instance, isn't included in this monument?
I think the monument would continue. It just wouldn't be -- it wouldn't include Buck Gully. Because I think if -- we haven't talked with Senator Royce or Representative Royce's office specifically about this, but if they don't want to include that, they would leave it out. We didn't want it included.
Okay, I didn't -- your list of benefits, I didn't see money listed there. Do we get money, or do we just get more visitors as a result of having it listed?
There is a potential for some additional resources. They didn't go into detail on the bill, but they said there is potential for that. And we did actually ask their office if we decided not to include Buck Gully, that they would absolutely remove it if we wished that they didn't.
Okay, and then the only other area that we're talking about is the Back Bay area, and that's shown as not owned by the city?
It's not. The fishing game generally -- California Fish and Wildlife owns the water area and Shellmaker Island. And then the county of Orange owns the regional park that abuts Irvine Avenue and University, including the Muth Center.
And right now, is it considered a national landmark?
I don't know if it's in the national natural landmarks. I don't think it is, but we could find out.
I think the CNL. We've got the California natural landmarks and the national natural landmarks.
So it's not a national, it's just a California national landmark?
California.
Or California landmark. And again, does this mean that they're going to dredge our bay from here on out without us having to beg for money?
Probably not. But we have been successful in begging for money and getting the federal government to contribute, in this case, the entirety of the last Upper Bay dredging project.
Right, and as I recall, their condition was, this is the last dime you're getting. So I don't know if this changes that or not.
No, I would doubt it that it would. I think that stays.
So we're basically getting recognition and maybe some potential money, and also a lot of potential visitors. And I'm repeating myself, and more regulation. All right, that's the only question I have for now.
And Councilmember Pieter, I do want to correct myself. The Irvine Ranch lands, which includes the Upper Bay, is national natural landmark. My apologies.
Currently.
Currently.
Okay.
I'm sorry, say that again, which ones?
That you were asking about the Back Bay.
The California. It is a California national landmark.
It's the national.
So it's one of the 16?
It's the national landmark.
Okay. So do we know what kind of additional regulations we already incur over that? Besides Corps of Engineers and others that we're dealing with anyway?
I do not know.
Thanks.
Mr. Petros.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the request of Mr. Bren and the Irvine Company, I had the pleasure of participating in their pursuit of national landmark status for Limestone Canyon and that area up abutting the Santiago Mountains, the San Ana Mountains. And I can tell you that there is no, from my experience, there is no additional regulation. It is a landmark status. You are saying this land is put -- set aside for purposes of open space as a landmark or in perpetuity. That's all it is. What it also does do, though, is by virtue of these lands being landmark status, provides the opportunity to go seek additional funds for improvements, restoration, other native and natural occurrences that we may want to pursue there. I can share with you that if somebody like Mr. Bren thinks this is a good idea for his property, he probably doesn't necessarily see it as another inroad of federal regulation. Instead, sees it as what's good for the land and good for the county. We have one small blue ribbon in this hundreds of acres, thousands of acres, to contribute to the open space in Orange County. It doesn't mean more regulation. No, there won't be -- Smokey the Bear will not be walking down Buck Gully telling us what we can and can't do in those lands. What it does mean is that we will get to enjoy Buck Gully as that quiet natural preserve now and into the future. So I, Ms. Detwiler, I fully support this. This is a very good thing for the city of Newport Beach.
Any other comments by the council members? Let's turn it over to the public, please. If you have any comments, please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosier. I found this slightly odd because I had the naive impression that a national monument usually had some theme to it, that all the property being preserved in the monument was similar. And this seems to be a collection of disparate pieces. Seems strange to me. And I don't want to completely repeat what Councilman Pieter said, but I live on the upper Back Bay, which I see as not part of the discussion tonight because it's under the -- the water part of it is under the jurisdiction of the Department, California Department of Fish and Wildlife. That Upper Bay does have a problem, partly created by the city of Newport Beach when it developed the harbor, causing that to tend to turn into a marshland, and partly Mr. Bren's Irvine Company development adding salt to it. So as Councilman Pieter said, we do have, keeping it preserved in what we think is the state it should be, a need for periodic dredging of it. So I'm wondering first, do we know if the California Department of Fish and Wildlife has already endorsed the idea that it should be part of the national monument? And if they have not, in advising them whether they should or not, I think we need clarity as to whether the designation as a national monument will make it easier or harder to keep it dredged as it is currently. I can see possibly as a national monument, it might have to go back to the state of nature that it would turn into a swamp based on the harbor having been developed. And I hope that's not what we're signing on to. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, do you have any comment, or staff, do you have any comment about if we're going to be precluded as a city to dredge these properties or the water Back Bay?
It doesn't go into detail about that. We don't feel that it will, but again, it doesn't go into detail about it.
Okay.
Remember when the dredging of the Back Bay was not a city activity? It was a U.S. Army Corps partnership with the county of Orange. The only thing we did was to try to go back to Washington and get money for it. So I don't know that it would -- any of that would change in this matter.
Well, as we're going through some of these questions, when we come back for the second discussion on this, it might be useful to clarify that. Any other public comments, please come forward.
Good evening, Dan Purcell, member of the public. This is an absolutely horrible idea to even consider ceding any control to the federal government and to take power away from the local community is absolutely absurd. Thank you to Councilmember Petros for acknowledging that you are in fact a spokesperson for billionaire Don Bren. Let's face it, Don Bren can pull more strings at the federal level than anyone in this room here can. If he sees this as a good opportunity, it's a good opportunity for him to remove any control from the voices of the people in this room, the community members, take it to a higher level, a federal level, an international level, where he can more effectively control what will happen in the future of this -- of the future profits of his company and add another billion to his pocketbook. This is an absolutely horrible idea. The overflights are an example of the type of concerns that are raised about local security. You get into more of a national security theater environment, where if we have any kind of crises and other, you know, World Trade Center or something like that, these areas can be locked down. I don't want to get into all the concerns about FEMA and this sort of thing, but absolutely we should not be yielding any control, any more control to the federal government and taking away the power of the local people to make decisions on local lands. There are a lot of unanswered questions. There were some -- there was one small slide where it listed some bullets of unanswered questions, but there was very little criticism of a plan like this, of which there are many criticisms to be had. Thank you. To reveal, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, please come forward. Seeing none, coming back to council. Mr. Petros, did you -- you're still listed there. Are you off? Okay, Mr. Pieter.
Yeah, I would -- I have a problem with Buck Gully being included at all. I would recommend it not be. And I -- it's totally within my district. I'm more than happy to hold a couple of community forums to see if the community agrees or disagrees with that. The Back Bay, we're already there at the monument or the designation stage. You're just upping it. I'm not sure it makes that much of a difference, other than we definitely would need to put whatever comments into the letter as far as local control and being part of that committee and making sure we register that we don't need, you know, a further review by the Department of the Interior now.
So, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, it'd be helpful for staff to know if you felt that we should not bring the letter back. We're happy to do whatever you direct us.
All right, hold the thought there. Mr. Curry, you have a question?
Well, I think it might be helpful to have somebody from Congressman Royce's office come and maybe have an opinion from someone at the Irvine Company that has some background on this. I think very clearly this is in the public's interest to preserve open space, and I think this is a completely bogus issue about additional regulation. But let's invite -- I think we should prepare the letter, and let's invite Congressman Royce's staff to come and talk -- or Congressman Royce to come and talk about his goal for the bill and what it's designed to do and not do.
And I just have a clarifying question as well. If I'm understanding this correctly, the same properties, the same landmass area is currently designated as national landmark. Is that correct?
And California natural landmark.
California and U.S.
There's two designations.
Correct. And so a prior council went through the public discussion and public debate about designating, including Buck Gully, as a state and national landmark? Did these issues surface at that time?
We have to go back and look at our notes. I don't remember the discussion.
Well, on some of these, or all of these questions that have been surfaced, I think it'd be helpful to come back. I support Mr. Curry's notion. Let's have someone from the congressman's office come, someone from the Irvine Company as well. So what's the next step? This comes back to council.
Only if you want it to.
Well, yes.
I'm hearing the mayor and Mr. Curry say that.
And what's the sense of?
Mr. Pieter saying no.
Do we need to take -- oh, Mr. Muldoon, you want to speak? Go ahead. Mayor, put him.
I think Mr. Bren has the best of intentions. I just want to be sure there are no hidden catches that were not seen. And I want to know fully what any downside could be, and the congressman's office may be able to answer that.
Okay.
That would make me more comfortable.
Okay. So we will bring something back.
Mr. Duffield.
Well, for whatever it's worth, the dredging of the Upper Bay was great, and it was millions of dollars, I think somewhere around 40. And it's navigable now. We all paid for that to happen, and sadly, we can't -- we can walk around it, and we can kayak it, but we can't have a vessel of any substance go back there. So I think we should be -- should understand that that was taken away from us, and that I was saddened by that. Anywhere east of the San Diego Freeway you did that, you'd be lynched in the center of town, because on the East Coast, waterways are precious, and on and on with that. But anyway, I'm just commenting about that. I'm happy to talk more about this thing, and I just was saddened that we lost two and a half miles of waterway to boating. And there are reasons why, they believe, but I don't know if we had much say in that. And that's -- my end of my.
Mr. Duffield, if I might, I'd ask, so before it was designated as a state or national landmark, the Back Bay used to be, and once it was dredged, was there any period of time that the public could take a boat back there?
Ooh, baby. We used -- it was the waterski zone. Yeah, it was great. I'm sure Ed enjoyed that.
But, Madam Mayor, it wasn't the designation by -- of the landmark that did that. It predated that restriction. I think, and Duffy can correct me, I think it had more to do with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife's takeover of the Upper Bay.
Right. But it is just another -- what I'm trying to say is, it's a takeover, and it was -- it's something that we all loved, and we miss it, and we can't -- I don't know if we can ever get it back, but it is a navigable waterway that can't be used by a vessel.
Navigated.
Yeah, so anyway, for whatever that's worth.
Any other comments up here? Yes, Mr. Pieter.
Madam Mayor, thanks. Yeah, I would love to hear the congressman's explanation on some of this, too. You know, but let's be clear, this isn't like we're going to lose this as open space unless we do this. This is a prestige thing, and it gets more visitors. There's this potential carrot out there of more money, but there's also a potential hammer out there of regulation. So I would love to have the congressman's office and the Irvine Company comments on that kind of -- on those issues in the form of another study session. It would be my preference.
Did you say that Mr. Royce wanted to have comments back before he introduces the bill on September 16th or something?
I think that's his desire, but bills take a long time to go through Congress. I don't think it's an issue of getting it on anything on the first day. And if we want to opt out, we'll opt out, too.
Mr. Pieter, I mean, if we come back for the discussion at a council meeting, we still could fully explore these questions and see if we get satisfactory answers.
I'm okay with that.
So why don't we, as you've taken the notes and directive, let's bring it back. Let's have the congressman's representative, if not the congressman himself, someone from the Irvine Company, and we'll in the process get questions answered and clarify any misunderstandings if they exist. All right, well, thank you both very much. Appreciate it. All right, next item, number three, short-term lodgings. Ms. Brandt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Kim Brandt, your Community Development Director, and we have brought back to you for -- And we have brought back to you for your review and for your recommendations the results of several months of staff working with members of the community regarding the recent, or not so recent, issues regarding short-term lodging within the community. So I have some background information and then I'll move into our recommendations. So in terms of background, the city of Newport Beach has had a long history of vacation rentals. And that is particularly true for Balboa Island, Balboa Peninsula, and Corona del Mar. And we define short-term rentals as being a rental of property for 30 days or less. And this type of vacation rental, typically a week long, is something that is enjoyed by families or perhaps larger groups. And it provides kitchens and, you know, typically a whole unit for enjoyment by the guests. And it also has the impact of providing the property owner with rental income that in some instances may exceed whether, if they had a typical long-term rental. So in 1992, the city, for the first time, adopted regulations for short-term rentals. And that included getting a permit. And as I mentioned, the short term was defined as 30 consecutive days or less. And the, with the initial adoption of the regulation, short-term rentals were allowed in any residential zone. But later in 2004, the city council decided at that time that short-term rentals would not be allowed in the R1 or single-family components of planned community areas. And that, but however, the existing properties that had permits, which were 212, would be allowed to remain. So since 2004, we've only issued new short-term rental permits to properties in more multi-family zoning. So how do you get a short-term lodging permit? Today, you have to be in the correct residential zone. You must obtain a short-term lodging permit and a business license. And then you are also obligated to pay the appropriate transient occupancy tax or bed tax for any rentals that occur on the property. And I do note that some homeowners associations do have CCNRs, codes, covenants, and regulations that restrict property being used for any type of vacation rentals. And the city today does not enforce that CCNR. So that is something that a property owner would have to check with their homeowners association to ensure that vacation rentals are not prohibited through their private CCNRs. So this is a map of the entire city. And the yellow areas show where you currently can have short-term lodging. And then those little red dots are the 212 properties that are currently grandfathered. So that means that the underlying zoning is R1 or single-family in a planned community zone. And that has, those properties have been grandfathered since 2004. So when you look at the concentration of short-term, of our active short-term lodging permits, you'll see that they're located where you would expect them to be located, along our beaches and on Balboa Island. And what we've done for, just to try to break down this information further, is we've color-coded some of the communities and listed how many short, active short-term lodging permits there are in relationship to the total number of housing units. So, because I think at this scale, Balboa Island looks like every single property has an active short-term or vacation rental permit. And when you look at the actual numbers, it's 11 percent, and let's see if I can get my pointer to work. 11 percent of the 2,123 housing units have active permits on the property. Corona del Mar, it's 2 percent of the total number of units. Balboa Peninsula, it's 12 percent. And West Newport is 6 percent, if my eyes are serving me well. So here's a blow-up of Balboa Island. And you can see the green indicates the active permits. And those little purple locations are grandfathered properties. And if they have a green dot on top of it, it means they also have an active permit. So we have 244 active permits as of yesterday or on Balboa Island. So we came to you in January earlier this year and you told us that you wanted us to go out and do some public interest. There's obviously a lot of community interest in what's going on in terms of short-term rentals within the city. You asked us to look at filling in the gaps on the peninsula area for vacation rentals. We were to look at home sharing regulations and looking at expanding our operational guidelines for vacation rentals. And also, we had been in the process at that time of speaking with Airbnb regarding agreements with, in terms of how they advertise properties on their internet platform and whether or not they would submit the transient occupancy tax to the city. So what have we been doing since January? First of all, I do want to say that this is not a community development department-only approach, that it's been a multi-departmental approach. We have had representatives of the Police Department, Finance Department, the City Manager's Office, the City Attorney's Office, Code Enforcement and Planning, all meeting together to devise what is the best approach to addressing the many issues that we've been hearing from the community on this topic. So we conducted two community meetings, one in March and one in June. We've met with the Newport Beach Association of Realtors, the Balboa Island Improvement Association, as well as smaller meetings with residents and realtors. We've looked at what would it take to fill in the gaps in some of the R zones on the peninsula. We defined home sharing and we drafted additional operational standards. And we've been continuing to talk to specifically Airbnb regarding their listings of properties in the city of Newport Beach. So what have we heard? Frankly, we've heard a lot. We have, I think, I'm sure many of the people in this room have attended either one or both of the community meetings. And we've heard that we need more operational standards. We need more and better code enforcement. There's a real need and desire for the residents, from the residents in this community to preserve their residential character of their neighborhoods that they live in, regardless if they're single-family or multi-family neighborhoods. There's been discussion, maybe we need to limit the number of permits allowed in the city. Other words, put a cap on it. The, on the other end of the spectrum is maybe we need to eliminate short-term permits completely from the city. We've heard from frustrated residents who live in communities with CCNRs that do not allow vacation rentals, but they're occurring anyway. It's like, help, what can you do to help strengthen us in terms of not issuing permits when our CCNRs say they're not allowed there? We've heard from residents and as well as business owners, we need to know who we can contact on a 24-hour basis if we have problems with the property. And also, we've encountered very helpful existing property management companies who've wanted to share their best practices with us and feeling that they have practices that would benefit the community as a whole. So what did I mean by filling in the gaps? Well, if you look at this exhibit, the goldy yellow area shows where short-term lodging is currently allowed. And so let's take the example of the peninsula. All the grayed areas with the purple dots are R1 zone properties where we could potentially fill in the gap and allow short-term rentals on all of the properties that are gray, not just the ones that currently have the grandfathered allowance. And so that would also occur as you go further up on the peninsula and all the way up towards West Newport. So we looked at each one of these areas. And we wanted to understand, well, when did they become zoned R1 and what was the premise for that? Now I need my glasses. So looking at this areas, Area 1 and Area 2, these were areas that were rezoned by the city in 1989 from a multi-family zoning designation to a single-family designation. And that was based on lot size. We felt, the city made the determination at that time that those properties, due to the size of their lots, were more appropriately zoned R1. Then we went further down into the middle of the peninsula area. Here's Bay Island for a point of reference. And we looked at these areas.
Kim, a quick question. The lot sizes were more appropriate for R1 because the lots were small?
They were too small to support.
And you didn't want them to subdivide or put multiple units on it? Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you for that clarification. So then we went down further on the peninsula to Area 3, Area 4, and Area 5. And all of these properties have been historically been zoned R1 from the 1940s and 1950. And this area over here was rezoned in 1989 as well because the lot sizes were considered too small to support multiple family development. And then, this is, I'm sorry, this is a little bit closer to Coast Highway. This little area around 40th, 48th Street to 54th Street. Again, this was an area considered too small to support multiple family and it was rezoned to single-family or R1. So staff, we looked at all of those areas and the reasoning behind the city council's actions for the designation of R1. And we felt it was really in the best interest to preserve the single-family character of those neighborhoods. And so it's staff's recommendation not to change the current zoning allocations to allow short, additional short-term lodging in these areas. And furthermore, it's staff's recommendation for those grandfathered units in the single-family zone that the city council consider phasing out the ability for short-term lodgings to continue on in those R1 neighborhoods. But we, that we could come back with an amortization period. And I gave an example in the staff report of 10 years, that after 10 years, then they would no longer be able to get a short-term lodging permit on the properties because they're zoned R1. So that's something that we have asked you to consider.
Kim, the 212 are across the city. It's not just on the peninsula. Is that correct?
Yes, and I can go back later to the exhibit. But they're primarily on the peninsula area and along the coastal areas.
And some of those 212 are not in use?
Correct. I think 93 you have, I think our current number is today, there's 93 current active permits.
All right, thank you.
So another question is, should we limit the number of permits that the city issues on a citywide basis? And currently, we have 1,202 permits. And so that's a question that we could limit it on a citywide basis. We could break it down by geographical area, such as Balboa Island or the peninsula. And staff is, as I'll get into later, is recommending that that be something that the city council consider at a later date if it is deemed necessary. Because we are coming, we do have a two-phased approach that we will be recommending to you. We talked about home sharing. What does that mean? Typically, for a vacation rental, I think most of us would envision that that means I'm renting an entire property, an entire home, and I have the full enjoyment of that property while I'm, while I'm there. But the home sharing concept, I'll contribute it more to, or attribute it to our millennials who have a much more creative way, I think, sometimes of vacationing or going about tourism. And that is where you can share a room or, and sometimes people have even rented out couches. And that's why I have the example, the Homer sharing up there on the screen. But the idea is that you're renting out a portion of the home and not necessarily have use of the entire property. And then the concept is, is that the person who is renting to you is present and still on the property while you're there as well. So we currently do allow that in our code and we would consider that a transient use that would be subject to paying the TOT and getting the necessary permit. But we wanted to clarify our code specifically to the home sharing concept. So we have developed a draft definition for council consideration. And that would be added to the municipal code. So we have come back with, drafted some new operational standards for consideration. A lot of them have to do with notifying, providing proper notification to the guests so they have an idea of how the property is to be used, where, who to call when there's a problem. When is trash pickup? Where can I park? When is the street going to be swept? Do I have to move my car? And then also notice, giving notice to all the guests that they're, that they're responsible for all the activities and potential violations and fines that may occur if they're not abiding by the city's municipal code. We also are recommending that exterior notification be placed on the property so that the neighbors know who to call in case they're experiencing a problem. And we also are asking that the short-term lodging permit be displayed on the exterior of the property as well as the appropriate city contact information. We're looking at additional operational standards in terms of maximum occupancy. We're recommending that it be two adults per bedroom, so that's 18 years or older. Again, the city needs to know who the local contact person is and that the short-term lodging permit needs to be provided or displayed on all advertisements, whether it's in, if anybody uses a newspaper anymore, but any type of internet platform. We would want to see that the short-term lodging permit is displayed on that advertisement. And then we are, including a standard that if we do have a noncompliant unit, that the property owner is going to have to, you know, ask the guest to leave at the end of their agreement, but will no longer be able to rent to any future guests, even if he has agreements in place. And of course, that all onsite parking has to be available to the guest and that the city would have the right to inspect the property. So the CCNR issue, the codes, codes, covenants, and regulations issue was something that was very important to a lot of different people that we spoke to. And typically, this, a city or the city of Newport Beach does not enforce private CCNRs. We consider them civil matters. But in speaking with the city attorney's office, we felt that we could require as part of the application process, a letter from the homeowners association stating that vacation rentals is consistent with their, with their CCNRs. And we would require that as part of the application. If they didn't provide that information, we would not release or issue a short-term lodging permit. And also, something new that we're asking you to consider is a minimum stay. I think historically in the city, vacation rentals have been about a week long. But what we're finding with the, with the internet and with all these online hosting platforms, that the stays are becoming one or two nights. And I think that has a whole different impact on the neighbors. I have an illustration here, the revolving door. You don't know who's coming and going from properties that are adjacent to you. And so it just, I think, is a little less consistent with a residential neighborhood. It gives it more of a, more of a motel type of, or a hotel stay where you have a constant turnover of guests at the property. So we're recommending or suggesting a minimum stay of four nights. So regardless of what regulations that the council may want to adopt, it all comes down to code enforcement. And we have, have been focusing our efforts on code enforcement, starting last, last year, and have continued those efforts this year. And we do have a seasonal employee who is focusing on the online listings, who basically is going online and trying to determine where they are located within the community because a lot of times they don't have addresses listed, or I think most of the time, they do not have an address listed. And so it's more of a proactive approach where typically, we are in a reactive mode. We have been coordinating with the police department. We have weekly reports between code enforcement and the police department in terms of any type of disturbance, activity citations that's been issued or allowed unruly gathering ordinance violation that's been issued. And we're correlating them back to short-term rentals and then using our tier-two fines where appropriate when we have those instances.
Kim, if I ask a quick question, and I commend you finding that $218,000 with your contract in play. That's fantastic. But those, 250 noncompliant, 131 came in and got the permit. But what about the others? Did they, what happened to those who were not in compliance?
So if we, if we detect someone who's not in compliance, the first question is, can they get a short-term lodging permit? Are they in a properly zoned area? So if they're not in a properly zoned area, then we don't issue the permit. We'll still collect backed TOT tax. We'll still collect backed TOT taxes and business license taxes for operating a business without the proper permits. We're still going to collect all of our appropriate fees, but they're not going to be able to continue to operate a short-term rental, they're going to have to cease and desist.
Essentially shut them down?
We do.
Okay, did you go back and check and make sure that?
We do.
There's a way to figure that out. All right, thank you.
So despite our efforts, we still feel we need more code enforcement because we, I think Rob is getting some numbers, there are hundreds, we have a sense of hundreds of short-term rentals that are operating without permits in the city that we need to get a handle on. And so what we're hoping to do is to contract with a professional service that will provide a more robust list of unpermitted short-term rentals, where they're basically going through all the online services and helping us detect who is operating within the community. And in order to, and then we need the actual staff to follow up on that information. So we're estimating that we would need a part-time code enforcement officer focused solely on short-term rentals and an additional part-time revenue position to provide the necessary administrative support. Because there's a lot of paperwork going back and forth as we're administering citations and collecting the taxes and doing all the necessary paperwork. So our estimate for, on an annual cost would be anywhere from $204,000 to $211,000. And we believe that this cost can be offset by the collection of unpaid bed tax or TOT and our business license and permit fees. So as I mentioned, the online companies have created this whole new dimension to vacation rentals. And I've just listed a few on the screen, but I think they're popping up possibly faster than we can communicate with them. And we find them difficult to regulate because they're online businesses and they don't have a physical presence in the community. And we have been having ongoing dialogue with Airbnb, but we haven't been able to come to the place where we feel that we can bring an agreement forward to the city council. So we want to continue to work with Airbnb and then the other, if we're successful with Airbnb and then use that template to move forward with other online services. And again, our goal is to have them only list on their platform rentals that have a valid city permit and that should be advertised as part of the rental. That they would allow us for the auditing of TOT revenue that they collect and that we would ensure that the TOT is being paid on all the rental income that's received. And one thing that we have done since January with the help of IT is that we have created a daily interactive map that shows all the active short-term rental permits in the city as well as the appropriate zoning. And so you can go onto this interactive map, you can put in an address and it'll bring up information regarding the short-term lodging, whether it's in a proper zone and whether or not there's a permit on the property. So if someone in the community is concerned and thinking, boy, something's happening next door, three doors down, and I don't understand, there just seems to be a lot of different people coming and going, they can go onto the city's website and see if there's a short-term lodging permit on the property. And they can also see if the zoning allows it. And if they have concerns, then they can contact us, the code enforcement, and we'll follow up. Because regardless of how many code enforcement folks that are out there, we really want to rely on the community to help give us the information so that we can follow up appropriately. And we think this is a really good tool because it's going to be updated on a daily basis in terms of whether or not a property has a permit. So again, as I mentioned earlier, we're looking at a two-phase approach for addressing vacation rentals. So our recommendations for phase one is to expand the operational requirements and require our permits to be renewed on an annual basis. We used to do that, we want to go back to that, annual renewal. This isn't a right that runs with the land. We want to require verification letters as part of the application where there's CCNRs, require a minimum stay of four nights or another appropriate number, and include home sharing in our code. We're recommending phasing out the 212 grandfathered, single-family properties. We want to continue to negotiate with the online host platforms and increase code enforcement. And then for phase two, we would come back to you in the fall of 2018. So that would give us two summers to go through with the phase one because we feel we have a lot to do and to bring all these regulations into place. And then if necessary, we could discuss with the council placing a cap on the total number of permits, extending the length of the minimum stay, perhaps limiting the number of days a property can be used as a vacation rental, and perhaps increasing fines or adding additional code enforcement. So based on your input, we'll return back to the council with municipal code amendments and draft operational standards for your consideration. And I realize that this is a lot of information that I've just given to you. And I'm, of course, available to answer questions as well as everybody else.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Kim. I'm sure we'll have lots of questions. Mayor Protem.
Could you go back a couple slides to the first slide in phase one? And before I address a slide, this is one, thank you. It said that some believe the rules do not apply to them. Is there a legal basis that they're claiming that to be the case, or?
Mayor Protem, do you mean the rules don't apply to the online retailers? Yeah, so what they're arguing, or their position at least, is that they don't have a physical presence in the city and that they are not an operator under our code, therefore they're not required to comply. Of course, we have a different perspective on that and we believe our code does actually place obligations on them to comply with our rules and that they are an operator. And so we're just going back and forth with them right now.
And has that been adjudicated in the courts yet?
This particular issue, I mean, there have been some online retailers in terms of like expedia.com and Orbitz and that type of, out of the city of Anaheim, but not that I'm aware of in reference to these short-term lodgers with Airbnb.
There's no controlling state law on it or federal?
Not that I'm aware of. Again, this is an emerging technology, these guys are out there and they're really disrupting local government and the way things have been done for a long time.
Okay, thank you. Personally, I'm fine with permits being renewed. H-way verification, have to learn more about. I believe the minimum stay should probably be three nights, not four, that's my opinion. Others may disagree, I understand that. And on home sharing, have to learn more about what the consequences would be if there are any unintended consequences we're not aware of. You know, I understand it's called couch surfing, I believe, is pretty trendy. But I'm not entirely sure what it is and isn't. I've never done it and probably never will. And then, could I see the second slide? The phase out of the grandfathered, single-family properties has me a little concerned because of the cash flow expectation from an investment in real property. So the length would influence my decision on that of the grandfathering out. Definitely continue to negotiate with online host platforms and increase code enforcement. I'm of the opinion, I may be wrong, that there's only a certain number of people who will do this. And eventually, when they're caught once or twice, it no longer makes financial sense and they'll get fined. So I don't see it being an increasing problem, but I could be wrong because maybe the trend grows. So I'd have to learn more about that. Thank you.
Any other questions up here? Did you want to? All right, let's move it to the public, please.
Madam Mayor, as you do, I note the time, and this is my fault again for not, probably not starting your meeting at four. I do think you need to probably be in closed session at 6:30. What you might, hopefully the folks in the audience and the council will consider this is part one of two. I obviously want to hear, everyone wants to hear everyone's perspective and I apologize and I feel badly that we haven't allocated more time for that, that's my fault.
So part two would be another study session?
I think we need to do that to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak before we bring something back to you. At least that would be my recommendation.
Well, we'll address that as we conclude, but that might be a good idea to keep the conversation going. Yes, sir.
Mayor Dixon and members of council. I attend in both public forums and I listen to many of the public concerns and I believe the staff came a long way to address some of these.
Could you identify yourself?
My name's Craig Batley. I believe there's more work to be required. For instance, to try to prevent this from having short-term lodging curtailed, it's pretty difficult. Right now, Huntington Beach has, doesn't allow short-term rentals, but if you go onto the websites, they have like 300 for rent. So this is something that you really can eliminate because of the internet platforms, you just have to control it. So I'm in favor of a lot of restrictions. And I think that Newport Beach, you know, they have a few hundred-year traditions here. The Chamber of Commerce has been around for 100 years, Balboa Ferry, Balboa Pavilion, and vacation rental industry, it's been around for 100 years. The economic impact for the city is substantial. There's about $20 million of lodging rents paid to people who offer their property. And it's about 57,000 room nights, about $10 million is spent by the vacationers that come mostly on the peninsula every summer. A lot of those businesses would go out of business if that wasn't available, restaurants, renting bikes, paddle boards, all that activity. One thing that I think that the council should be aware of is that short-term lodging is a proprietary guest relationship, which means guests have no rights. So if they violate the terms of the contract, they can be kicked out immediately and it's easy to do. And with the new regulations the city is proposing, I think that a key item on this whole thing is having the terms of use agreement. So when someone goes on their website and gets a short-term lodging agreement, they have to click the little box that agrees to all the terms and conditions that the city is setting forth. That way, if they violate any of them, the city has a recourse. Rather than hire and spend hundreds of thousands in code enforcement, it's easy, much easier just to, those that do comply, make sure that they obey the rules. If they don't, they can be revoked. It's a very simple process. And I think there needs to be more work done. I'd like to see that terms of use agreement all spelled out so that we can review that. I think that's a key component for this whole process. The Lugo addendum needs to be included also for all short-term lodging contracts. I don't see that anywhere. That's something the city has provided and for people who are aware of that, that needs to be part of the terms of use agreement. The other thing that's critical is that in the forums, people want to have a number they can call. Well, a lot of people have a number maybe, but it's just an answering machine, that's not sufficient. There needs to be a live operator that they hire, a professional service, so they can talk to a real person. I think that's very, very important. And we don't have much time to talk about this, but I think with a little bit more work, the city can maybe come forth, the city staff can come forth with a little bit more refined agreement to support their positions here. I will say, on the sign thing, if you put too much on the sign, you lose the impact of who to call. I think it's important that the number, the main number should be the live operator, not the police department or code enforcement after hours, you're not going to get anybody. The police, I know, don't want a whole bunch more calls at dispatch.
Okay, could you, is that wrap up? Could you just answer a question I want to ask? What is, do you have a point of view on the minimum stay?
Well, see, a four-night stay is just an arbitrary number. Practically speaking, a one and two night is problematic. A three night, what happens is, they come down on a Friday or a Saturday, you can't just have a two night and do a weekend. They either have to rent Friday or Monday. That requires that they have a holiday, they have to take time off work. So a three-day actually accomplishes the objective the same as a four-day. And what would happen if you limited it to a four-day, the city would lose thousands and thousands of dollars of revenue. So the three-day accomplishes the purpose because anybody who's going to come down for one or two nights isn't going to opt for a three-day.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a quick question for him too.
Go ahead.
I appreciate you coming out, I know you've got the expertise like no one else does. The R1s that we have on the peninsula that we look, we refer to as the fill-in-the-gap areas. You know, we made them R1s because their lots were too small, because we didn't want two units on it. But I'm not so sure that the rental or short-term lodging is, you know, that it doesn't fit in those areas. And to me, we should extend the short-term lodging areas to those areas. And I guess I wanted your feedback, is that something that you would agree with?
Well, there are those, by the way, I lived on the peninsula for 14 years on 31st Street. And I had vacation rentals on both sides of me, so I have experienced this whole activity. I didn't manage either one and I experienced that. So I'm familiar with this and I empathize with anybody who has a short-term lodging rental next to them. On the, regarding the lot size, keep in mind now, the restriction of R1 occurred in 2004 as a response to the, what do you call them, the rehab stuff? Had nothing to do with short-term lodging. So for about 60, 70 years, they've had short-term lodging throughout the city. By the way, Balboa Island is Zone 1, is Zone 1, R1 and a half. So every single property on that island can get a short-term lodging permit because they have a special zoning. So the lot size has nothing to do with the short-term lodging, nothing.
No, I understand that.
And it has nothing to do with really an R1 versus an R2. Today, the value of the property, especially on the oceanfront, is so high, no one would ever build duplex, hardly ever, unless they had a personal reason because the value is so high.
You say duplex.
Now, regarding R1, we have people that are renting some of their properties for $2,000 a night. And they require that, that income's important to them. And they're, and some of those properties are in a R1 zone, but they have a grandfathered in. So if you took that away from them, it would be significantly impactful. And one thing other to keep in mind, probably, I'm just guessing, around 90% of all these short-term lodging permits are on the peninsula and Balboa Island. And that being said, the peninsula is 77% rental. It's not really a family SFR neighborhood. And they've been used to that for years. So to fill that in would be a possibility, I suppose, but I don't have a position on that one way or the other.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments, please come forward quickly.
Yes, my name is George Schroeder and I have lived on the peninsula, on the 100 block of 35th Street since 1987, bought the duplex. I'm also a licensed broker and realtor and I do own income property, so I guess I'm a property manager too. I do not do short-term rentals, I only do year-round. I think when we say that 77% of the peninsula is rentals, you know, I don't know what that means. I mean, to me, 90% of the peninsula is year-round residence. Okay, so the family that lives next door to me, Brandon and Bailey and their two kids, you know, it's a family, they've been there five years. The fact that they rent and I own doesn't make them any different from me. Okay, now across the street is a short-term rental. Okay, so every now and then, a crowd comes crashing in, they may have 10 people, they disturb the peace, okay, and my family next door has to put up with that and the police calls. But the first thing I just want to say is I think staff is going in the right direction and I support mostly everything that Craig Batley said. And I support everything that Mayor Protem Modine said, I think he is on point. On the number of days, I think three days is a reasonable compromise because when the short-term resident moves out, there's about six hours lost because they have to come in and clean it up and bring in linens and things like that. So a one day or two day is too short. If a person wants to be here one day, we have plenty of nice hotels, they can go and stay there. On the R1, the lots are small, you cannot build a two-unit building on it because you have to put a four-car tandem garage, a lot starting deep enough. When a person buys a property that's R1, it's going to be their home most of the time. And to have a short-term next door where people come in, and when people come in, they're paying quite a bit of rent, they're here for like an extended period of time and they're taking time off, they want to be out on the patios late at night drinking, having a good time. You know, they're not going to work the next day like the year-round resident who lives in his home next door. So I do have concerns about the R1 short-term. I think a phase out might be a reasonable thing to look at 10 or 15 years, like Mayor Protem said, you know, a reasonable duration. And then also, I think it's extremely important that any short-term lodging have a sign on front like Mr. Batley said, just with a permit number and a phone number of someone to call. When I walk down the street, if there's a gas leak or a broken pipe in When I walk down the street, if there's a gas leak or a broken pipe and water coming out of the garage, if it's a year-round resident, I can knock on their door and tell them. If I knock on the door, and I've done this, some people say, "Well, you know, I'm from Nevada, I'm just here for two or three days, I don't know anything." Okay? If there was a sign on the building, that I could call somebody and tell them, like, you know, there's a gas leak, or there's a broken pipe. Okay? And then also, it just lets all of the residents know that this is a short-term rental, and they're paying their TLT like they're supposed to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next comment, please. Mr. Kiff, so we're at the deadline, what would you like us to do?
It'd be nice to take a few more comments, but, and again, I need to apologize, but Aaron said we could squeeze in a few more minutes there.
Okay. All right, we'll talk quickly. Okay, please.
Hello, my name is Aaron Diamond, I'm a resident of the Newport Shores area.
Did you, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name?
Yeah, Diamond.
Okay.
And although we have a homeowners association, it does not govern the rules of the actual homes, it's just a shared pool, common area. So we're about 400 homes, as many of you know, very family-oriented. We've had a huge issue with the short-term leases by people just doing even though it's not zoned for. We had a big issue over the Fourth of July area, a lot of illegal fireworks, mostly just traffic. So the 400 homes, very heavy kid neighborhood, a lot of kids under the age of 10, we've seen people coming in 11, 12 o'clock at night, several incidents where several of the kids have almost been hit by a car, by riding their bikes, by skateboards. So just the traffic impact and pure disrespect from the neighborhood has been, has been a real issue. I personally believe anything less than 30 days, it's a vacation. I don't think it matters if we do seven, six, five, four, three, you know, people usually spend five to 10 days on a vacation. I do agree, though, that some sort of grandfather time, looking at when people bought property, based on maybe a 30-year mortgage or something makes sense, because maybe some people did make the economic decision to get a house if they were able to permit it. I don't want to speak for the entirety of the shores, nor for the entirety of Newport Beach, but myself, when I look at the shores of that 400 unit, to change anything to short-term rentals just because of the pure number of kids and traffic impact would be very unsafe. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Trissell. I purchased a duplex on the peninsula with the intention of residing in one of the units and using the other for a vacation rental. I've used the income from the rental to replace windows, will soon do siding and paint, and without that income, the 1920s cottage will continue to fall into disrepair. I hire a local professional management company, they vet the vacationers, make sure they're the families that we're looking for. We establish between us maximum occupancy, we collect and pay the bed tax, we have all the licenses, the insurance, and the permits. Unfortunately, many landlords don't follow the rules. They should be punished, not myself. I have great empathy for all those disturbed by unruly neighbors, whether those neighbors are residents, long-term or short-term renters. I would suggest the following. The Lugo regulations are much too weak, they need to be larger fines. Quite frankly, if I wanted to extend a party, have everybody kick in 10 more bucks and we're on for another hour. The fines need to be at least 200% higher. I would also suggest increasing the fines on the landlords, not just collecting back taxes, but serious penalties. I think we should have a minimum two-night stay, because frankly, not everybody can afford to take a day off. We're starting to sound like Malibu here. We have our beach, you stay out. And I think we should eliminate all home sharing and couch surfing arrangements. You may recall, 30 years ago, in Palm Springs, they had a terrible spring break problem, but that city council put through regulations, enforcement, and punishment. There's no longer a problem. Lastly, the police, I'm on 29th, the police there did a fantastic job. If there was a loud party, they went in, did the warning, and it was silent as a librarian there. They were fantastic. I understand arrests were downed quite a bit, and just did a great job of crowd control. So if you could please pass along to the chief and the rest of the police department, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Kurt Christiansen for 12 Carnation Avenue. The designation for the short-term rental properties, as I understand it, is a history of vacation rentals. Certainly, the peninsula, the islands, and West Newport have those. The Flower Streets in Corona del Mar have, with a few exceptions, maybe Marguerite and Portion of Bayside, have no history of vacation rentals, yet they are subject to uncapitated short-term rental circumstances. Most of those lots are 30-foot lots with three-foot setbacks, and the impact of short-term renters is huge in those areas. I am a real estate agent, as such, if a property that I list has defects, I must disclose those defects before it can be sold. And a short-term rental license in a neighborhood is a defect, and it deprecates the value of all properties. The purpose of zoning is to have consistent use of property. I could turn my property into an income property by using it for other uses. Short-term rentals are businesses, and they have no place in a community that has residential use. The Flower Streets in Corona del Mar should have the same protection as do the R1 units in Corona del Mar. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, why don't we take this, is there anyone else, we'll take this next question?
No, just one more guy.
Just, why don't we just take one more, and we will have on September 9th, have another study session, or whatever the date is in September.
Yeah, please consider this part one of two, so we'll reopen the public hearing at that point.
Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Don Abrams. I own Abrams Coastal Properties on Balboa Island. We manage about 25% of the vacation rentals on the island. I've got a professional staff of three people who are here with me, and that's all they do is manage vacation rentals, and it's a very good format for us. And we've talked to your staff, I think they've done a great job putting this together, and I really don't find fault with it, I think it's a good job, and I agree with pretty much everything. There was only one thing that stuck out to me, and it was kind of a small thing, but I agree that there should be a sign identifying the company that manages it, the permit number, but I think it's going too far to put a person's name on there. You can imagine the types of calls that a person sitting at home at night might get. It might not be the emergency call, it might be something very different. I've only gotten two calls in the past year about our rentals, but everybody knows my cell number, it's on all our ads, it's easy to find. One was a lady who wanted to report aphids, bugs, on the house that we managed. The second one was a neighbor who wanted to report that there was a dog at a vacation rental that we managed that didn't have dogs. Turned out that in that case, the owner was staying there that week, and the owner had their own dog. Those are the two calls that I've gotten, but when you have a person's name on a sign, you tend to get the calls that aren't necessarily the ones that should be. I recommend, I do agree that there should be a number that someone will answer 24 hours a day, and the way we have it set up, our office number's on there, and one of our professional staff is designated every night that the calls get forwarded to their number, and I think that's a better way to do it. And that's, that's the only thing I really take issue with on the report. We have a seven-day minimum stay in our rentals, and I think three or four-day minimum is certainly reasonable. And I could answer any questions if you had any.
All right, thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, Mr. Kiff, now do you want any direction from us at this point, or we just hold our comments?
Actually, I'd rather not.
Okay.
To continue the spirit of the public hearing, if folks in the audience came and you really wanted to let the council know something, please send that to the email address that Kim has put up. We'd be happy to talk with you about it, and again, my apologies for not allowing enough time for this item.
Well, I think that's fine, and I do want to just, at this point, people, you can hear it maybe twice if I say it again, but a thank you, staff. I really believe that it's been a very, my personal opinion, the process has been very open and engaging with the community, and we're certainly extending that invitation to continue the discussion. I think I've learned a lot in this process and will continue to, so thank you, Ms. Brandt, and I guess we will take recess. Oh, no, do we take public comments? Excuse me.
Public comments on non-agenda or agenda items.
All right, do we want, have someone come forward quickly on a non-agenda item?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Okay, hold your thoughts, we could do that in the next session.
It's okay, I'll go ahead and make the announcement. The city council will adjourn to closed session to discuss agenda items 4A and B, including conference with labor negotiators, city manager Dave Kiff, assistant city manager Carol Jacobs, and human resources director Barbara Salvini regarding negotiations related to the Newport Beach Police Association, as well as a meeting with legal counsel to discuss the litigation matter entitled Herman versus Brown. Thank you.
Very good, thank you so much. I'd like to call to the meeting to order the regular session of the Newport Beach City Council, August 9, 2016. Madam Clerk.
The roll call reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. City Attorney.
Madam Mayor, there are no reportable items from closed session.
Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Councilmember Selig, followed by the invocation by Councilmember Piotr.
Please follow me in the salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you please join me in prayer. I'd like to quote some of our founding fathers on these occasions. You all know Patrick Henry has "Give me liberty, give me death," but here's another quote. "Righteousness alone can exalt America as a nation, wherever you are remembering this, and in your sphere, practice virtue yourself and encourage it in others." God, thank you so much for the way that our founding fathers gave and sacrificed their life, liberty, and their sacred honor in pledging in the Declaration of Independence, coming together for our country, and standing up in a time against the most powerful nation in the world. God, it was an act of faith, we thank you for that act of faith. We ask that you give us wisdom as we try to lead and represent those that have elected us in our council meeting tonight. We ask for your grace and your blessing on the city, in Christ's name. Amen.
Madam Clerk.
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now's the time for city council announcements.
Mr. Petros.
I have one brief announcement, but it's a biggie. We have a new 16th Street recreational center opening. While it's not the West Side Community Center we envisioned, it is not your average community center. We've transformed a warehouse into a vibrant space that pulls influence from the surrounding industrial community, mixing a hip urban feel, I like that, with the inviting feel of a neighborhood community center. This new center is located at 868 West 16th Street, towards the end of 16th Street on the west side of town. It has our first-ever tumble track, a 20-foot-long trampoline for gymnastics. There's a dance and a fitness studio, professional-grade harlequin sprung flooring, aerobic weights, and a new yoga equipment will be there. Classroom and preschool area will host a variety of enrichment programs, including art, science, bridge, and we've got a dynamic feature scheduled, a dynamic program scheduled featuring classes for all ages, gymnastics, yoga for all abilities, robot building, fencing, and much, much more. There are free sample classes available, I would encourage you to go to the facility at 868 West 16th Street, the week, September 12th through the 18th, to try one of the 45 different classes that are being offered. There is a free gift given during that sample week when you try one of those classes. The hours of the open house are 8:00 to 10:00, and 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., beginning Monday, September 12th, through Thursday, September 15th. And for more information, please visit the city's website under Recreation. Again, a new recreation facility at 868 West 16th Street.
Thank you. Mr. Curry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was privileged to be at the Lobster Fest this year. I want to congratulate Leadership Newport for the great job they did, a capacity-sold-out crowd raising money for Make-A-Wish. And also want to congratulate the Arts Commission, I was with Councilman Selig for our concert here on the green, a capacity crowd there of several thousand people, with the Rolling Stones Tribute Band, another great program put on through the city through its arts program.
Mr. Selig.
Thank you. Well, following up on Councilmember Curry, the Rolling Stones concert, that was really one of the best-attended concerts we've had so far, and really shows what our civic green is meant to be, enables engagement and enriches our community. But I also want to announce that there's a second concert coming up this Sunday, and it's the Pacific Symphony is coming to Newport Beach. For many years, the city's tried to get the symphony to come down and perform. The concert's going to be on August the 14th, it starts at 7:00 p.m. in the Civic Center Green. Families are encouraged to arrive early for pre-concert entertainment, and an interactive musical playground beginning at 5:30 p.m., plus a special chance for kids to conduct the orchestra with the director Carl St. Clair. There's going to be more than 60 musicians there, led by Mr. St. Clair, and they'll play a repertoire of favorites from Tchaikovsky's masterpieces, John Philip Sousa, and songs from the South Pacific. The admission's free, and there's free parking available in the parking structure, and you're encouraged to bring a picnic dinner or purchase food or refreshments from some of the food trucks that are going to be on site. And the attendees should bring low-slung beach chairs and blankets for the event. And afterwards, the Arts Commission is going to be holding an after-party for supporters of the concert of $100 and more, and there'll be a special private catered reception for that later. And then also, I wanted to announce that the Arts Commission is going to have a retreat, and they're inviting the public to attend and participate in a discussion about the vision and mission of the arts in Newport Beach during their inaugural retreat, and that's going to be held on Saturday, August the 13th, in the Friends Room at the Central Library from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And this is going to be one of the first steps where the Arts Commission is going to try and add some more detail and more specificity into the arts master plan that the council reviewed a few months ago. So that's August the 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 o'clock in the Friends Room.
Very good. Mr. Piotr.
None.
Mr. Duffield.
I have none.
Mayor Protam.
Yes, a couple things. I had the privilege of attending the Newport Citizens of the Year event, where citizens, Elizabeth and John Starr, were acknowledged for their contribution to the community, and it was a very nice event, and we're so fortunate to- And it was a very nice event, and we're so fortunate this community to have people that are that active in civic involvement. And then this morning, I had a great breakfast with a group of guys, and these guys were like a blunt group. I really enjoyed it, but I was on the hot seat, and a lot of issues. But one issue that was more of a question than a concern was about the lawsuit involving Council candidate Jeffrey Hurdman, who's in the audience today, and our city clerk, Leilani Brown. So I thought I would enlighten everyone regarding the process, what our city clerk's role is, and then I'll share a personal story about myself with the city clerk as well. So Ms. Brown, you are the city clerk of Newport Beach, correct?
That is correct.
And what do your duties entail regarding elections?
I am the official elections officer for the city of Newport Beach.
And do you recall when Mr. Hurdman went into your office?
Yes, I do.
And what was he asking you?
At which point?
Okay, so just to go back to the story of the controversy, when he wasn't sure if he was eligible or not to run for city council?
I received actually correspondence, well, he had provided me with correspondence from his attorney requesting clarification whether he's eligible to run for city council.
And then what did you do at that time?
I reviewed the letter, and then I requested assistance from outside council. And then from that, I determined that, in my opinion, that he was not eligible.
Did you consult any of the city council members on this question?
No, I did not.
Did any city council members come to you and assert that they had an opinion one way or the other?
No, they did not.
Okay, and so what happened after you gave that opinion?
I sent Mr. Hurdman's attorney, and Mr. Hurdman via email, the letter indicating that I did not feel he was eligible, and then I was served with an order to appear at court.
Okay. And I think it's relevant, because, look, conspiracy theories are fun, but there's no conspiracy here. Ms. Brown was doing her job, and I have a sort of similar, but not nearly as intense story. I had worked so hard on my ballot statement when I ran for council, and I submitted it to her, and I probably got halfway down the building, and I realized I had a typo, because I had a copy in front of me. So I ran right back down, said, "Ms. Brown, there's a typo. Can I please submit the change?" And she said, "No, I'm sorry. I have already date-stamped it." And I didn't even leave the building. That's just the kind of employee we have in Ms. Brown. She's upstanding. She has no agenda. She's just doing what she thought was imposing the rules as written. And she sought outside council but did not seek influence, political or otherwise, from the council-elected members. So I think that story is important, because it goes to the credibility of the system and the character of Ms. Leilani Brown. Thank you.
And then, thank you for that. And then I have a few announcements. So happy to share some updates from our Recreation Senior Services Department. Registration for fall recreation classes is now open. The fall issue of the Newport Beach Navigator, our quarterly recreation guide, was mailed to residents during the first week in August. I'm sure we're all receiving those now. I have mine. Extra copies are available at City Hall and any of the city's staff recreation facilities. And you could also view the Navigator and register online at NewportBeachCA.gov/recreation. Also, I'd like to, many of you may have seen the news announcement, that the city has a new webpage in its website to provide the public educational information on sharks and general ocean safety, and how the city responds to shark sightings off our coastline and efforts to monitor marine activity. The page explains, this is unique, so this is really special for a coastal city. The page explains the shark sighting and response policy that Newport Beach lifeguards follow. Page visitors can also learn how our lifeguards are working with the Shark Lab at Cal State Long Beach to monitor marine animal activity. Three acoustic receivers recently placed off our coastline record data from previously-tagged marine animals, including sharks, that come within a certain distance of the receiver. Lifeguards collect the data weekly during the summer months, and the data is transmitted to the Shark Lab for review and then uploaded. So this is, we're really doing an inventory and management and communication of the known sharks. So this is very important information, considering sharks do get close to our beaches. Our webpage provides a log of the recorded data and any confirmed shark sightings in Newport Beach. So again, visit the NewportBeachCA.gov website forward slash Shark Education. And more entertainment news, movie in the park, that's a great fun event for the family, August 26th. Don't miss out. It's free, Kung-Fu Panda at the Community Youth Center in Corona del Mar. The fun starts at 6:00 p.m. with arts and crafts, and the movie will begin at dusk. And popcorn is free, so I'm coming. And you can bring your own lawn chairs, blankets, and picnic dinners. And I was also going to mention about the concert on the Green. I will be there. I'm excited. I was out of town for the last one, and it is just a must-do, must-listen-to event. So I'll be excited this Saturday, Sunday, this Sunday, Sunday, for a concert on the Green. I do want to add on to Mr. Selig's comment that, for the first time that I know of, that we do have private sponsorship for the concert. Citibank has generously, I don't know if maybe you mentioned that, and I-
No, I didn't. No, that's correct. We've got some private sponsorship. I think the Arts Commission has raised about $20,000 on that so far, just in the last couple of weeks.
That's fantastic. And I know you could do that on Facebook, which I did myself, so I'm really excited about that, and I appreciate the Arts Commission's good work on that. Green on the Green, September 10th, Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, the Fire Department, and the CERT team, Community Emergency Preparedness Team, will co-host the Green on the Green Eco and Disaster Preparedness Expo, Saturday, September 10, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It's free, and will be held here on the civic green. And for those special, those people who takes the 91 freeway back and forth, perhaps to the desert communities or wherever, just FYI, this is just a nice little tidbit. The freeway will be closed beginning mid-September during the weekends, weekend lane closures, for 10 weeks, so just be mindful of that. So, we provide lots of helpful information here at the city council. So now, we'll shift gears, but also shift schedule a little bit. There's a slight change. We're moving forward tonight's agenda. Item number 20, current business. We will consider this item at this time, so just everybody get focused on that. We're moving it forward, just for some administrative reasons with our city attorney's office. So item number 20, current business is to call the November 8, 2016 General Municipal Election, the ballot measure, and this is an item continued from our last meeting on July 26. So, Deputy City Attorney, or City Attorney, if someone wants to make a comment, please.
Madam Mayor, I believe the city clerk was going to respond to this.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
This is a continuance from the July 26 city council meeting. We have included that staff report with this staff report, so it is up to council how you want to proceed.
All right. I think what we will do is go to the public to solicit your comments, and then we'll bring it back to council for a full discussion that will consider the public's input. Do we have any comments from the public? Please come forward.
Madam Mayor, I missed it. Why are we doing this item now?
I think that the main reason is that if there's some type of modification or changes, it gives us an opportunity to go make those changes before the conclusion of the meeting. We're pressed right up against the deadline for getting this over to the county. So that was sort of the logic of trying to move it up, so that if there are changes to be made, that they can get made and implemented this evening, if that's the desire of the council.
That's correct. Okay. Please come forward. Any comment?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I have to say, I didn't have my glasses on, so I don't even know if this is the item that I came to speak to. I was hoping maybe you would have a little discussion before I spoke.
This is the ballot measure on the two-thirds vote, and-
Okay, that's what I came to talk with, but I didn't hear anything from the, usually you talk about it a little bit, so we could respond, we could respond to it. From what I understand, I hate to say it, but I think it's a proposed solution for looking for a problem. I don't really think we have a problem. We have, I don't even know why it's being done. We actually have a wonderful staff person that handles a lot of the financial things here, and our city, I mean, I've lived here since 1962, and our city has just done great on all the financial things. You may not agree with some of the things they've chosen to do, but they don't do, they don't put us in any risk at all. So I'm also concerned that this is something that might end up all of the citizens having to become experts on financial things, and I just don't see that as a wise thing to do. You are the seven wise people on the council, and you have your staff, you have the city administration. It just doesn't make sense to me that you would want something on the ballot to do with financial issues when you have all the things you have at hand, and we elect you to do and make decisions, so it seems like you could make decisions without this going to the ballot. It doesn't, I just, I think it's unnecessary. I guess that's my big push, and I particularly like the fact that we have such a wonderful person handling it in the staff. I think Dan, whose last name I can never remember, and certainly not pronounce either, is, I think, an excellent person. So why do it? It just costs money. I don't think that makes, it doesn't make sense to me. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Mrs. Skinner, if she wouldn't mind.
Yes.
I know you are one of the big advocates for the Green Light Initiative.
Yes.
Would you be okay if we applied the same logic to that?
Well, I thought about that, as a matter of fact, before I came tonight. I think land use issues are easier for people to understand. I certainly work with a lot of people who do understand it. Takes a little while, but they do learn it. And I think as I go through the city, especially in the last year, since those apartments were being built, the people are speaking out and talking, and I just think it's a different enough issue, frankly.
Oh, I'm good. I just thought maybe we became the seven unwise men during land use decisions. Thank you very much.
Well, you're supposed to be wise. I haven't heard you vote on the things I'm concerned about yet, so I'm hoping you'll stay wise. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Please come forward.
Jeff Hurdman, Babel Island. When first proposed, I was very much in favor of the proposed tax initiative, for I do believe that all tax increases should be approved by the voters. But when the certificates of participation were added to the proposed initiative at the last city council meeting, I now have to take a position of opposing this action and hope that the voters will also follow my position for the following reasons. The state constitution already requires voter approval for all bonds, because general obligation bonds include the ability to raise taxes. Certificates of participation do not raise taxes. The proposal before the council has not been reviewed by the Finance Committee or the city financial staff, and contains many flaws and unintended consequences. You need to make sure that the costs to taxpayers for this proposal are thoroughly evaluated. The nine days left to do so before you meet the deadline for placing this initiative on the ballot is simply not enough time. Most important, the current proposal has no exemptions for emergency responses due to a natural disaster. The city council needs to ensure the community that provisions for emergency financing in the event of a natural disaster are available. The city should be caused to utilize, might be caused to utilize more expensive funding to initiate and complete capital improvement projects if voter approval is not received, as well as delaying the initiation of capital improvement projects. And special elections are expensive. This is a complex issue that should not be rushed into. The initiative sounds good, but in the long run, and in my opinion, is poor governance. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another comment? Any other comments from the public? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. As Nancy Skinner said, this is a little unexpected that the item was coming up so soon. I have also had little time to collect my thoughts, and in the absence of a staff report, I think those trying to follow what we're commenting on, this must be difficult for people to understand. You have, before you continued from the last meeting, a couple of proposals that are rolled into each other. One is about whether the city council needs a supermajority to put a tax increase on the ballot. And the other one, unrelated to that, is whether, or largely unrelated to that, is whether other kinds of, certain kinds of debt instruments, including the certificates of participation, that were the subject of the meeting earlier this evening, would require voter approval. As Mr. Hurdman said, I think, I think more thought should be given to both of these proposals. I cannot see any reason why either of them, they both involve charter amendments, making a permanent change to our charter. I don't foresee this council either putting a new tax on the ballot between now and the next election in 2018, nor do I see them issuing new certificates of participation during that time. So I see no reason why we shouldn't, as I think Councilmember Selig said at the last council meeting, take time to thoughtfully consider these proposals, fully have them looked at at the Finance Committee, and have them brought back in time for the consideration of a charter amendment, not this November, but November 2018. I see no reason why we're rushing this through. There's no urgency at all that I can see about it. As to the comment about whether the city's voters should be involved, I actually agree with that, that the voters should have a role, and in the comment I made to the, I keep forgetting its name, Public Facilities Corporation in writing, there is a long history in the California Constitution and California law that two-thirds of the public should have a say in incurring municipal debt of all kinds, whether it's general obligation or anything. And that rule has been eroded over the years, but we have it in our power as a charter to city to take that back. I think we should give that serious consideration. But if you were going to go forward with this tonight, I would say the ballot measure as written is not at all clear to the public. You cannot tell from this that there are the two separate issues, of how many council votes should go on, and a separate one about whether the public has a new right to vote on certificates of participation. And second, there's something about preparing an impartial analysis, yet there's a ballot statement. I don't understand how the two are different from each other. There's just a lot of details here that haven't been worked out, made clear, and I think as a city, we need to take the time to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Please come forward. Any other public comments? Seeing none, let's bring it back to the council. Madam Protem.
Thank you. So bringing this forward, I was hoping to build a consensus, and I think I'm almost there. I'm actually very amenable to having a provision that would add for emergency situations, although for the most part, COPs are not used for emergency situations. They're more used for future lease revenue opportunities. So what I think in this minute, this plan was a little bit last minute. Although we had bond council have a say and sign off on it, I think it's good to have the community involved in it. So what I think I'm going to propose is to bifurcate these two issues. To have the original OC Taxpayer Protection Act still be on calendar for 2016, we basically sat on it for about a year, and we tried to bring a debt component, but it looks like Finance Committee was not able to meet, that's two city council meetings now, they've had opportunity to meet on this issue, they haven't. So what I would like to suggest is to send the certificates of participation down to the Finance Committee to be reviewed as a potential ordinance to be passed that would sunset in 2018, should the voter initiative pass by the voters in 2018. And this would, of course, be vetted by staff, Finance Committee, and other members of the public who want to have a say in this. And in the meantime, go ahead and move forward with the tax protection component in time for the 2016 ballots, with the arguments being written by myself selfishly, Finance Committee member Will O'Neill, and Mayor Diane Dixon.
I'll second that.
Mr. Curry.
Well, you hijacked my measure, but you're welcome to it. And I want to commend Mr. Muldoon for his thoughtfulness and leadership in recognizing that we were not ready for prime time. that we were not ready for prime time with this debt proposal. I could go through a list of issues that it could create and authorization issues, but I think sending it to the finance committee is the right thing to do for input from the public and for proper drafting before it gets considered. So I appreciate your thoughtfulness in doing that. I think rushing to the ballot and trying to make amendments within an hour to get there would have been a, certainly a big mistake. Previous charter amendments, we've had committees, one chaired by Marion Bergerson, one chaired, I think, by Paul Watkins, who spent several weeks thoughtfully going through these charter amendments. And so I think that's a thoughtful and wise move, and I commend Mayor Protim Muldoon for doing it. I will say that I am pleased to have been the father of this, even though it seems to have been hijacked from the crib, but, and apparently to be used to support the election prospects of one of the candidates, but so be it. So, there we go.
Okay. Any other, oh, Mr. Pieter.
Yeah, I believe the city attorney can tell us where, we can have five people to sign this ballot initiative, and three of those can be council people without violating the Brown Act. So I'd like to add myself to the list from the council, and I would like to propose Lee Lowry be added as well. Actually, I'm open to having Carolyn Kavetschi be the fifth signer, if she's willing to sign it, of OC Tax.
So not Lee Lowry?
Not Lee Lowry.
Okay.
Let's have Carolyn Kavetschi, Will O'Neill, and then you, Kevin, and I.
Okay. Is that a motion?
That's.
Is that just an amendment to Mr. Muldoon's?
That would be, yeah, if it's okay with the makers of the motion, we'll just do it that way, or I'll make it a substitute motion either way.
Probably best to make that an amendment if it's acceptable.
Would you accept that amendment?
No matter to me.
Second or of the.
All right. Any other comments from the council members?
Before you vote, can I ask the staff, are we clear on what the motion is?
I believe so, but maybe it'd be helpful if I just wrote it out to make sure I understand, Mayor Protim Muldoon. So it would be actually, I think it's item three on the July 26 council agenda. It would be Resolution 2016-70, 2016-71, and Resolution 2016-72. And for the ballot arguments, as well as rebuttal if needed, it would be Mayor Protim Muldoon, Mayor Dixon, Finance Committee Member Will O'Neill, Councilmember Scott Pieter, and then Carolyn Kavetschi from the OC Tax Group.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Point of clarification.
And then as part of that, I'm sorry, not to cut you off, Councilmember Pieter, the other component would be to direct the finance committee to study the COP and bond lease revenue issue, and then if necessary, to make a recommendation to the city council regarding the adoption of an ordinance that would then sunset in November or December of 2018, assuming a charter amendment is put to the voters at that time.
And the only other clarification, if somebody were to submit an argument against this, who decides who signs that? And, and then we would have rebuttals.
So the, Councilmember Pieter, the opposition, or if someone decided to do that, that would be an outside group outside of the city, because this is a legislative-sponsored charter amendment, so it'd be an outside group. So I don't know, there could be no opposition, there could be some, I couldn't tell you at this time. And in terms of rebuttal, I believe as part of the motion, Mayor Protim Muldoon made those same five people also able to draft a rebuttal if necessary.
And election law actually determines priorities as far as if multiple groups come and try and propose an opposition argument, right?
Correct. In the elections code, there is hierarchy.
Hierarchy as far as who's given preference over the others.
Correct.
That sounds good to me.
This is how sausage is made, right?
Yes.
Mr. Curry.
Just one clarification. The staff report has an odd usual sentence that says, "This amendment does not give the city council power to raise its compensation or that of any other city officials without voter approval," which is a thoroughly random sentence for either of these things. And I just want to be clear that that's not included in what's going on the ballot.
Actually, Councilmember Curry, that is included, and it's there on purpose. There's actually a government code section that requires us, when we're amending the charter, to put a provision in there to explain whether it's affecting city council or city officer salaries. So we're required by law to actually put that in there.
But it doesn't impose any new limitation.
But it's not imposing any limitation at this time. We're just saying it's not doing that.
Because we raise city officials' salaries other than ourselves every time we adopt a budget.
That's right. And you're not doing that through this charter amendment.
Okay.
You're absolutely correct.
That's the City of Bell Amendment is.
All right, shall we call for the vote?
With Councilmember Curry abstaining, the motion carries 6-0-1.
Very good. Now we'll move back to the regular order of things, and it will be Madam Clerk.
Public comments on consent calendar. This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 15. Public comments are invited on consent calendar for members of the audience. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each of the items for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right, let me start on my right. Mr. Pieter, any items to pull?
No.
Mr. Duffield.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to recuse on item 15, because I have a business that's done work with Visit Newport.
Okay. Mayor Protim.
I'll be recusing myself on item eight, because I'm in the wireless telecom business.
Item eight, okay. Mr. Petros.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have to abstain from item 14, as my firm is involved in the decommissioning of songs.
Mr. Curry.
I will call a recusal on item eight for stockholder conflict with AT&amp;T.
And Mr. Selich.
No vote on item 14. I don't have enough information to make any determination on that issue.
Oh, okay. All right, so.
Madam Mayor, I have a couple of notes.
Yes, oh, all right.
Just for the record. So on item number three, we do have a substitute amended resolution. That's for Coronel Omar High School. On item number seven, I actually have a recusal of myself, not just to note publicly, related to my partner's financial, his medical office there. And 11, we're pulling, we're recommending that be continued indefinitely. Aaron's pointing to eight. Eight and 13 were also amended. And 15, there's a clarification that the title should really reflect the destination marketing plan and by annual budget for 1617 and 1718, not what's stated in the agenda. I think that's everything.
Oh, did you get all that?
Councilman Petros, which item? All right, I'm gonna move the balance consent calendar, items 1 through 15, with clarifications in item 3, 7, 8, 13, and 15, with item 11 polled indefinitely. No vote, no vote on item 5 by myself, and a no vote on item 14 by Councilman Selich. Recusal on item 7 from the city manager. Recusal on item 8 from myself and Councilman Curry. And recusal on item 15 from Councilman Duffield, with an abstention from Councilman Petros on item 14. Okay, recusal, recusal, thank you. No problem.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Call for the vote? Oh, public, excuse me, I'm sorry. So technically, we are taking public comments on everything, excuse, on everything but 14. Is that right? Because that's the only item that's been polled? Did you poll it?
Nobody polled 14.
You didn't poll it? Oh, okay. All right, public comments on all the, on any of the items. Do we have any public comments? Please come forward.
All other people, my name is Tom Meng. I live at 2433 Bunya in East Bluff. I think I'm speaking to the right subject, because I had a hard time following your agenda.
I do, too.
I'm referring to the East Bluff street restriction. I'm speaking in favor of it. CDM has not been a good neighbor. They believe that their parking lot is our streets. We did an experimental test on part of one street. It has worked very, very well. This will continue it over all the streets in the A section. What happened is, when we restricted the parking in the one street, they simply moved up. And so now we want to cover the whole area, because it did work very well.
Thank you very much. Thank you. The item is, has been approved on consent, but welcome your comments. Please come forward.
Madam Mayor and council members, my name is David Moore, and I live on Arbuthia Street. And I want to say that I am very much in favor of the adoption of the parking restriction on all of the A streets. And I also have a statement here from a neighbor of mine who's not able to attend. Patricia and George Crossy are also in favor of the adoption of this restriction.
Very good. Thank you very much. Please come forward.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmen. My name is Paul Duramus. I am a 45-year homeowner of The Bluffs, the home of the same home of The Bluffs. And I'm here in regards to the same East Bluff issue. My printer ran out of ink on the way down here, so I'm going to read this, I'm sorry. Over the past 25, after living here for 45 years, the past 25 years, I have watched with total dismay at the seemingly never-ending expansion of the high school, and to a lesser extent, our Lady Queen of Angels Church. Gone through the construction of the middle school, and then the expansion, not yet completed, of the, of the church, and now, within the year, the sports stadium. What the council, I hope, recognizes is that of the past 40, 40 years, there has been no residential or commercial development in East Bluff or The Bluffs, none at all. And the problems that have existed for the last 25 years are solely responsible to the reckless expansion of the school. We have driving issues, we have paralyzing parking, we have safety issues, we have trash issues, all the fact of the expanding schools and no parking legalized in the area. I've been to this, to the council, I came here a decade ago, sensing impending disaster when I found out that the busing had been stopped. And I noticed the neighborhood getting worse and worse and worse and worse, and that was much, much too early. I came again when the church overtook the other three parishes, and it was concerned about our neighborhood. And again, about three years ago, when, unknown to me, that East Bluff was making the same similar situation. In attachment E, Don Slaughter, who's a very, very nice, bright man, in his supporting statements, there is not one thing that is in his statements for his area that is not applicable to the four surrounding homeowners associations. The school is divided by a two-lane street on the north, the south, and the west perimeters. East Bluff is luxuriously located across six lanes. It's the farthest away, yet they're the only ones that have been able to be deserving, apparently, of this wonderful privilege of the parking permit. We were told three years ago that they'd come back and investigate and discuss our area, and it never happened. And when I found out about this tonight, I was kind of concerned and disappointed that we couldn't have gone through in a concerted effort, because it affects all the, all the areas, and I think you know that. The school has, and the school district sadly, has a well-documented history of not really caring about parking or where the students park. They have only reinvented and redesigned one of the two parking, one of the parking lots, probably three or four times, and it cost up a couple million dollars, and it really hasn't made much of a difference, except that the idea of red, of red curbing, what you're discussing, considering doing, is only going to make the people park elsewhere. It's going to drive them further into our neighborhood. We're behind the church, and we are literally paralyzed. So that is what I'm concerned about, so.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
We'll talk, we'll talk more, and there's an HOA meeting, and we'll try to do on your neighborhood as well.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
All right. Any other public comments? All right, moving forward. I probably got it out of order on the public comments. I apologize for that. All right, Madam Clerk. Oh, didn't we already?
No, we do need to vote, yep.
Oh, I, we already did that.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0. And let me read the ordinance titles. One moment. For item 3 and 4, 2016-15, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach amending Section 12.68.060C of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to establish a residential parking permit program for Arbuthia Street, Aleppo Street, Elder Place, Amen Place, and Alta Vista Drive between Aleppo Street and Aurelia Street. Resolution, ordinance number 2016-13, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach approving zoning code amendment number CA 2016-003 for the Lido House Hotel Project located at 3300 Newport Boulevard and 475 32nd Street, and also number 5, ordinance number 2016-14, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach amending Exhibit A to the Newport Beach Municipal Code, Section 3.36.030, related to cost recovery, Section 12.16.020, related to parking penalties, subsection 14.12.010B, related to water service fees, and ratifying existing library fines.
Very good. All right. You're still on.
Public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
So please come forward, members of the public, if you'd like to speak on an Yes, sir, please come forward.
Thank you. My name is Terry Welsh, and I'm president of the Banning Ranch Conservancy. I want to give a banning ranch update to the Newport Beach City Council. As you may recall, last October, the applicant brought a large project to the California Coastal Commission. The Coastal Commission staff, in a surprise to no one, recommended denial based on inconsistencies with several sections of the Coastal Act. Now, in their analysis of banning ranch, the Coastal Commission staff identified areas, areas totaling 11.5 acres where development could occur in a manner consistent with the Coastal Act. Now, the Coastal Commission did not take action in October, but rather instructed their staff and the applicant to work together on a project that could be brought back at a future date and approved. Now, for the Banning Ranch Conservancy, this was a wake-up moment. We realized that if the applicant were to bring a project back to the Coastal Commission that was consistent with the Coastal Act, the Coastal Commission would be inclined to approve, approve it. We had a lot of internal discussion, and we decided that if there were a project to be approved on Banning Ranch, we wanted, to the extent possible, to be involved in this project, to see that it's the best possible project. Early this year, we approached the applicant to see if there is a project out there that can be supported by the environmental community. We had a couple scoping meetings in February, where each party listed their priorities that they would like to see in such a project. Following these scoping meetings, we engaged the help of an architect and a planner. And in April, we forwarded a preliminary plan that calls for a project of 108 units located off of 15th Street and 17th Street. I provided copies of this plan, one for each council. I provided copies of this plan, one for each council member and some extra for the staff. Now, at this point, we have not yet heard back from the applicant. One potential problem is that our plan does not have coast highway access, and this is something that the applicant wants. It is also something that the City of Newport Beach wants. We remain firmly committed that there is a solution out there, but it has not yet been realized and will no doubt be the subject of future discussion. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward.
Madam Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I wanted this evening to bring to your attention a issue involving the Southern California Gas Company's Advanced Meter Program, which involves the sighting of wireless transmission devices in residential neighborhoods. It's a matter which I think, as you can suspect, is highly contentious when you're putting transmitting equipment and so forth on public property, in this case, streetlights, in residential areas. As some of you may know, my initial involvement with the City of Newport Beach and my initial distrust, I would say, with the city government involved, its leasing without public notice or opportunity for appeal, a cell site from the T-Mobile Company on a streetlight top that happens to be in front of my view windows looking across over that upper-back bay that we talked about in the study session this afternoon. Partly as a result of the fallout from that, in January of 2014, the city council enacted a new wireless ordinance, the cornerstone of which, as I understood it, and I think the decision-makers understood it, would be that any application for wireless devices being mounted in a residential area would involve public notice and a clear appeal path for the public. A month later, in February of 2014, the then-city council heard a study session item from the Southern California Gas Company about their Advanced Meter Program. And I naively assumed, since that was a study session and the council had some problems with the program and gave no direction at all about it, that that would be coming back at a council meeting. Heard nothing about that for -- since 2014, although I am aware that the county board of supervisors was also considering a wireless measure, and they turned down a proposal to exempt the Southern California Gas Company's Advanced Meter Program from that. This passed a week or two ago, exactly seven years and six months after the official construction notice. I was really surprised to find this construction notice handed to me at my door saying that the streetlight in front of my view windows was going to be used as part of the Advanced Meter Program. I had to go back through the city records, and I found out the city manager had signed without the council's authorization a contract contrary to what the county board of supervisors had decided to do with the gas company, allowing them sites at certain locations. My location was actually not on that. And I may say, after raising a stink last week, I got a call from a very kind gentleman at the gas company who told me my streetlight was no longer considered, so I need not worry about this. But I am still worried because this affects many other people, and I think it's a matter that this council has to consider and speak about. I can't tell you all the things that I think are wrong with this program, but I do think it should be discussed by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Dan Purcell, member of the public, and I have some unscripted comments. First, I want to commend council member Petro for at least mentioning Donald Bren's name. For many years, I came to many, many, many meetings here in these chambers, and his name, Donald Bren's name, was never, ever even mentioned. People are afraid to even say his name. They always use the Irvine Company. As council members, you have a fiduciary responsibility to look to the future in this city in order to protect the well-being, the financial and overall well-being of the people of this community. We have a person, an individual, Mr. Donald Bren, owner of the Irvine Company, who has an oversized importance in this city in terms of influence and in terms of just the financial well-being and otherwise. And I have concerns about unknowns. He's a nice guy for the most part. Relative to other billionaires, he seems like a pretty nice billionaire. So he's a nice guy. This isn't a personal attack on Mr. Bren, nor is it any attack at all, but what I'm encouraging you to do is to consider the future. Mr. Bren is getting up in the years, and I'm sure he has a transition plan for his Irvine Company. Do you know what that transition plan is? Could someone come in? Could a Soros vulture fund come in and take over those properties someday? Who will be in control of the Irvine Company when Donald Bren passes away? We need to know that. I need to know that. You have fiduciary responsibility to know what the future holds with that organization. I would like to see Mr. Bren, one of these days, walk into one of these council members. Everyone would just gasp to actually have him show up here, speak for himself. He's a nice guy. I've seen him speak. He's well-dressed. I'm in here. My hair is a mess. I don't care. I'm in here speaking. He has a very professional appearance. We need to know from Mr. Bren, or you need to know as fiduciaries to this city, what is the future of the Irvine Company and how does that pertain, in financial terms and otherwise, to this community? Maybe you know, maybe you don't. I don't know that you know, but I want those answers. My background is finance, and those unknowns are risks. We want to make sure that if there are any unknowns, we at least attempt to answer those in some way, shape, or form. So I would encourage Mr. Bren to be more transparent, come forward, get out in the public, make some -- and I would encourage you to consider the future, consider the next 20 years, the next 30 years, and what may happen in the transition. I have no idea who's going to take over the Irvine Company when Mr. Bren passes away, but we need to know that. We need to know what the future holds for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on non-agenda items? All right. Seeing none. Our reports from city council on committee activities. Mr. Petros.
None.
Mr. Curry.
No report.
Mr. Saj.
Just one. The -- our local coastal plan will be heard by the Coastal Commission at their September meeting here in our council chambers. Correct? Yes. Yes. Got to -- I always have to have a last-minute check because it's always subject to change.
It may change. Mr. Pieter.
Yeah, this is the time for requesting future agenda items. I'd like to request the city council review at the September hearing, or September meeting.
No, that was kind of earlier in the meeting.
Well, it really wasn't identified as the agenda, other than announcements.
City of council announcements, non-discussion item, item number 12? Sorry. Missed it. This is a committee report.
Understand. It didn't have it agendized under that item, so.
Okay.
So I put my request into the city manager, and he can put it on the agenda. It doesn't have to be brought up here.
Okay. Did you have any other committee activity report?
No.
Okay. Mr. Duffield. Ms. Mayor Protam. Okay. Let's move into item number 18, public hearing. It's 16, actually, the second reading of the ordinance to amend the stakeholder business structure and annual assessment levied for the Newport Beach Restaurant Association improvement -- Business Improvement District.
I think we have a brief staff report.
Okay.
Just a brief staff report. Mary Losi, I'm from the city manager's office. The restaurant association has asked the council to approve an amendment to its structure as far as placing the businesses in categories and assigning a assessment levy. This item has been, this is the third time it's been to the council. You've had several staff reports. We are asking for a public hearing to be held and then adoption of the ordinance to amend the structure, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. I'll bring it back to council. Any questions of staff? All right. Do we have a second? All right. Let's turn it over to the public. Any comments from the public on this item? There comes one.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for your time. I'm a new board member to the bid and just learning about --
Your name, you identify?
Oh, my apologies. John DeFrenza, community member here in Newport Beach and business owner. We -- my wife and I own and run Crocker's, the well-dressed Frank on Bellmo Island. New business, two and a half years into it, and learning a lot as we go. Three minutes, I understand. Thank you. The intention of the bid, I'm getting to get it. It's a little bit slow in my understanding of the details of it. And the prior board members have created a fee structure that has been presented prior to my participation and involvement in the board. I have been at one board meeting, the 27th of July, and so I'm beginning to understand some of the function, some of the reasons for us. The only action that I've become aware of and learning more about is past fees that have not been paid by other restaurants over the time. And the only other piece of the puzzle that I've been able to become aware of is this fee structure that came by mail to us as a business owner. I am seeing a link between the fees not paid by prior businesses and the current fee structure, only in the manner to ask why haven't other businesses paid the fees. And in asking these kind of questions at the board, I'm not getting clear answers yet. I'm sure that it'll come in time. The fee structure that you have, as a board member, I have not seen yet either. I've only received it as a restaurateur. I would recommend that the fee structure, having been done without my involvement in the prior two years, I would recommend that the fee structure have a manner in which that the restaurateurs can respond in their category and somehow be proactive in the manner in which the fee is levied to them. It seems without representation in the fee structure that has been presented to the board, to you, for authorization, for approval. And again, I'm not part of that prior two years of effort, so I speak out of turn, and I understand that. I respect those ahead of me who have put this structure to your vote, but I am at a loss to be able to understand it or see how it has come about. I thank you for your time. You know more about it than I do, and the future will hold more.
Thank you, and thank you for your participation on the restaurant port. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Mayor Protam Muldoon and the rest of the council members. My name is Ron Schwartz. My wife and I and our family operate Muldoon's Irish Pub down the street here for the last 42 years, and --
Not to be confused with our mayor, Protam.
Well, yeah, he's got a full head of hair. He's good-looking. So there's no relations that way. I'm the incoming president of the Newport Beach Restaurant Association, and I would just say, out of the 450 restaurants or so, I don't know of any opposition we've gotten to this new fee structure. We worked at it at this, I think, I think I'm going into my fourth year on the board, and we spent about two years working on this with a committee and including city help. And I think it's a good structure. We'll see how it goes. And Mr. DeFrenza is on the board. We hashed this out with him about a week ago at our first meeting, and he can bring it up at any time he wants. And if there's a majority of the board that thinks that the fee structure isn't any good after you hopefully pass it at the end of the year, then we'll come back with some more advice, which is our -- we're an advisory board. So I would urge you all to pass this. I think it's good. We got rid of, not got rid of, but we took off certain businesses that weren't getting any help from us, like a gas station or a mini-mart or things like that. So I think we've done a good job, and I think so far, so good. So I would hope that you would pass this. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comments?
Madam Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. As the staff said, this is the first reading of an ordinance, and at the first reading, you try to get the ordinance correct because it's going to be published that you're considering adopting it. And at the next meeting, you have the option either of adopting what you introduced at this meeting or not adopting it. You don't have the option of changing it at the next meeting. And I also will apologize if I am speaking out of school here, but I am having trouble understanding the staff report copy that I picked up at the city clerk's office Friday afternoon. I don't know if this is the same staff report that you have and therefore what you're proposing to adopt, but on the second page, page two of the staff report, it's telling me that some changes had been made to an original thought about what the ordinance might include. It's clarifying that a full-service restaurant is one with waitstaff. It's clarifying that a fast casual restaurant is one where you place an order at a counter because my comments in the earlier meeting, something like McDonald's is not a full-service restaurant. It's also not what's called a fast casual restaurant. It's what's called a fast food restaurant. And then further down the page, it says this ordinance clarifies, as Mr. Schwartz said, the types of businesses that are included and not included. And it has down here, farmers' markets, mini-marts, gas stations and so forth are not included. And then the staff report tells me to say, look at item C for the ordinance. I don't find any of that in the ordinance. The ordinance is not explaining the difference. It does not have those changes about full-service restaurant, fast casual restaurant. There's nothing in here clarifying that farmers' markets and gas stations are not included. So I'm, am I seeing the correct ordinance that you're introducing? Did I get a wrong copy on Friday afternoon? I'm totally confused about this. And then section three of the ordinance I'm looking at is talking about the increased benefit assessment, and I thought there was some discussion about this previously. Not all businesses are getting increased assessment, so I'm not sure I have the right ordinance here, and I don't know where the correct one is. Thank you.
Does someone want to clarify? Is that Mary?
Well, yeah, just briefly, they're not included in any of the other categories, so that's why they're exempt or not in part of the bid. So for instance, you know, gas stations are not included in one of the categories that was there. That's why they're excluded.
Mary, did you have any other comment? No? Okay. Any other public comments? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0. And I have to read the ordinance title for 2016-14, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Exhibit A to the Newport Beach Municipal Code, Section 3.36.030, related to cost recovery, Section 12 -- oh, I'm sorry. I'm in the wrong one. Amending the stakeholder business structure and annual assessments levied for the Newport Beach Restaurant Association Business Improvement District.
Okay. Item number 17, Mr. Kiff.
This item, we're recommending you continue this indefinitely.
Okay. Do we open this up for public comment? Yes. Public comment.
Madam Dixon and members of the council, my name once again is Jim Mosher. My comment on this is that the city council has an advisory board that is supposed to advise it on matters related to the Newport Beach Restaurant Association bid. The advisory board is the bid board. I attended their last meeting. This item has to do with what to do with past due assessments and how they should be collected. And I'm surprised the recommendation here is just to tell you to continue the item indefinitely without hearing what the recommendation from the restaurant bid board was. And I am not qualified or prepared to tell you exactly what that recommendation was, but I know they spent 10 or 20 minutes crafting a carefully reasoned recommendation to you about it, and I'm just surprised you're not hearing what the recommendation was. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, any other public comments? Well, any other public comments? Bring it up to the council, maybe we'll answer that question in the process. Any comments?
Move to continue per staff recommend, excuse me, indefinitely, continue it indefinitely.
Have a second. Before I do the vote, Mary, if you want to just explain what we're doing.
The board's original request was to forgive all the past due penalties that were on the books. When they met last week or the week before, they had talked about it, and as an advisory board, they really don't, can't take any action. It's up to the city to take that action. And so what they had recommended was asking the city to send the members that are outstanding to collections. So we wanted to continue the item because it needs just further review at the staff level to figure out what, how we go forward from here.
But we will be pursuing the collections of those?
That is, that is their intention, so we will be looking into how we go forward with that.
Very good. Okay. Call for the vote.
Motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
All right, number 18, Mr. Webb.
Actually, staff would like to recommend that we pull this item so we can work with the applicant a little further on the item to see if we can come to resolution on it.
We need any public discussion on that? Yes, okay. Public discussion on item number 18, which will be continued.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, management staff, and public. I thank you for your personal interest you've taken.
Please identify yourself.
Pardon?
Please identify yourself.
My name is, what?
Please identify your name.
Yes, that was going to be next.
Oh, I apologize.
But I'll do it now. My name is Hart Werner, Balboa Island, 119 Grand Canal, US Air Force vet on Vietnam era, and my wife, Anke, and architect Barry Walker, back there. I want to thank you for your personal interest you've taken on a deal down there at Grand Canal. I've seen the mayor there and Ed Selig, of course, several times. Many of you, maybe all of you, walked by. And also, of course, city management and staff. Thank you very much. We've had the duplex at Grand Canal for over 30 years. This existing patio has been there for more than 80 years, since 1933, within the existing fence, too. And we'd like to ask for a waiver, for a little undertaking, and I want to show you the measurements, what we're looking at. A little patio about extension about, within our existing fence, about 12 inches high or less. And about three feet across, three feet across towards the Grand Canal boardwalk. That's what we're talking about tonight, the waiver request. Why do we ask for this? Well, for one thing, it's, I believe it's safety. We do have a lot of senior people, like myself and others, come and visit. Wheelchair people, we do rent to handicapped ADA, and we're trying to make it ADA compliant. We do have an elevator being installed within the next month. It's already been prepared several months ago. Widened the hallways and did other things like bigger doors and even a ramp in the back, back to the back entrance upstairs on the, on the deck. There's a ramp, so there would be good transition for any wheelchair people. Other things are, of course, the uniformity of it. Grand Canal, most patios are raised out there, and many of them are raised more than ours. But we're just asking for the, for the one-foot level and sloping down so it be easy for wheelchair people to access it. We've had neighbors use a wheelchair and they couldn't, or the neighbor owner couldn't use the patio because of the situation out there, being that close to the door. Beauty of it, and maybe you have, do you have the, or you want to show later on? Don't take that away from my time, please.
Well, your time is already up, but since you are the property owner, I'll give you a few more, a few more seconds.
Oh, my gosh. Anyway, basically, it should be common sense, no cost to the city. And I want to just quote one thing, no, Mr. Curry has, has worked hard here in this council, and also for Ronald Reagan, our president, who said, "We shouldn't apply it to this city," but he said, one quote, "I'm with the government. I'm here to help you." I don't think that should apply to this, this city. And maybe one, one more second, since I can't speak anymore, I'll have to sing one item.
Sing?
Let it be, let it be, let it be, let it be, Newport City Council, let it be. Thank you for your listening to me.
For our entertainment this evening, thank you very much. What is this photograph we're looking at? Is that your front porch?
Yes. Well, this is one of our neighbors, Tony and Cheryl, they build a beautiful patio, and this is a kind of a ramp we're thinking of to have a general step at one corner and come up to our patio, which is going to be slightly inclining towards the front door so there'll be a transitionless entry into the front doors. There are two doors, one for the tenants and one for us.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
And then there's a second one. I'm asking you, would you rather have us do this one or the previous one? Which one do you like more? This one is on amethyst.
Yeah, this is the right way, right?
Is it? Yes.
Are we taking a vote now?
Is it what we really want for this beautiful city? We love Olivia. We want to have it beautiful.
It doesn't have the aesthetic quality that you, I see.
Yes.
I see.
And it has a drop-off.
Mr. Selig has a question of Mr. Warner.
So Hart, are you okay with the staff recommendation to can pull this and work with you a little bit more on this?
Well, we're in the, we're in the middle of, I didn't, I don't know for sure what the recommendation is. I think Mark, who's worked on this so long, in fact, I asked him, have you looked at the ROI of working on this, the return on investment while you're building bridges and other things? I think there are more important things to look at, but yes, I don't know the exact recommendation, Ed.
Do you guys want to explain it to him again, what you're recommending?
Actually, I'd like to work with him. There's some other complications that have come into play on this right of way here, and we need to discuss that with him. The city attorney's office is involved in, on a few things, so we want to make sure we're clear on what we can and can't do. There may be things we can't even waive in this case. And then there's a very explicit council policy specifically on the Grand Canal that is, can be complied with in something like this and could have flowers instead of concrete in front, but we need to talk with him a little bit further on that.
Oh, they got the attorneys involved.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not okay with this. We've waited since we paid our $963 on May 23rd. It's taken a very long time, and it may be complicated, but it's costing us a lot of money waiting for the, for the completion of our project. So we'd like to have it approved.
And staff apologizes for the delay, Mr. Weaver. The original plan, as you know, your architect submitted, showed all your raised patio on your property, and when it became apparent that you wanted to use the city's property, the three feet of city property, it got a little more complex, so we need to work with you a little bit further on that, if that's okay.
And we weren't even aware, we weren't aware of this being city property when we started this. We would have never done the remodeling, I have to say that. That was our main purpose, to get a big, level patio out there, bigger than we had before, only a few feet, and now we almost see three feet taken away from our nine or 12 feet. That we can't use. Yes, we can put plants out there, we could, but this morning I got a letter from the city, water conservation, what uses more water, a fence or plants?
I think just briefly, there were some issues arose actually today that we just became aware of regarding different interests that might be in the property where you're seeking to do this work, so we need to resolve those before we're able to go forward, and that's the reason for the request.
All right. So thank you, Mr. Warner. We're trying to move this forward as expeditiously as possible for you.
Thanks for the extra time.
And thank you for the entertainment. Okay. All right, do we need to take a vote on this? Do we have a motion?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
We have a second?
That is to continue.
Correct. All right, call for the vote.
Motion, motion carries seven zero.
All right, item number 19, proposal for phases three and four of the sculpture exhibition in the Civic Center Park. And so we have Mr. Heatherton.
Can you give us a moment to, we need to retool here?
Good evening to Mayor Dixon and members of the council. I'm Tim Heatherton from the library and also the staff liaison to the City Arts Commission. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the Arts Commission to, to request approval of a proposal to have a phase three and four of the sculpture exhibition in Civic Center Park. Brief presentation for you. An arts commissioner coined the term "the museum without walls," and what it is, it's a, it's a rotating, it's a rotating show of art. It's 20 pieces with 10 pieces coming in on an annual basis. As 10 come out, 10 new come in. The benefit of this is that the exhibition, it offers public art to the city without the expense or the liability of owning it. The rotational aspect of the exhibition means that our residents and guests are exposed to a variety of work. There's stuff that they can like and enjoy for two years. If there's something that doesn't appeal to them, at least they have the, the knowledge that it's not a permanent addition to the city. And while it's a rotating exhibition, it can also be identified as a specific and permanent art project that can be supported through the Public Art and Cultural Facilities Fund. And what that is, it's, it's a funding source created by council policy I-13 to acquire and maintain permanent art structures and installations as identified by the Master Arts and Culture Plan. And the commission proposes appropriating $250,000 from this fund for the next two The Arts Commission considers it to be an installation in that while it's a rotating collection, it's a permanent installation, that there's pads created, that the park was laid out by a landscape architect to accommodate this rotating collection. So in, in, in their summation, it's a permanent type of installation. The funding source will be supplanted, hopefully, with some private fundraising by the Newport Beach, the Newport Beach, the Arts Foundation. And hopefully, the Arts Commission, they hope to make this particular project the focus of arts fundraising in the city. So they'll provide sponsorship opportunities for the exhibition. They'll make the Civic Center Park and the Sculpture Garden in particular a site for public activities and events, and also use the exhibition as a way to promote cultural tourism, which is an important part of, of the city's economy. One thing they also wanted to increase was increased community engagement. And at the beginning of the meeting, Councilman Selig, he mentioned that the Arts Commission is having a retreat this Saturday. This is all in an attempt to engage the public and create some community advocacy. And so hard written into the proposal are opportunities for the public to get involved through online surveys, through increased opportunities to state their preferences at the Arts Commission meetings, to participate in the selection process with the curatorial panel, in order to really make this project a product of what the public feels should be in, in the park, and the kind of art that the people who live in this, in the city enjoy and would prefer to be shown. Just the final comment I wanted to make is that there is a huge benefit to this in that the Arts Commission feels that the quality of people's lives is increased by this, as well as it's an opportunity to boost the economy. In fact, as recently as 2012, there was a study said that the arts and cultural types of businesses and nonprofits in this town, they generate an impact of more than $57 million in terms of direct expenditures, indirect expenditures, and audience expenditures. So Arts Commission feels there's real value to this. They've done two previous phases that were largely fairly successful. They have learned some things along the way that they think that can make the project even better, and so they submit this proposal to you tonight.
All right, any comments up here before we go to the public? Thank you, Tim. Want, go to the public? Any public comments, please? Seeing none, we'll come back here. I think Mr. Selig would like to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to move the, move the recommended actions suggested by the Arts Commission for phase three and four. I think it's an opportunity to keep moving ahead with the, with the Sculpture Garden and at the same time, give the encouragement with the will to our Arts Commission to move ahead in coming up with the public-private partnerships that we're looking for. I think they need a little bit of breathing room here, and this will help for the next two years. And, you know, they're having their retreat, they're going to be looking at the Arts Master Plan, putting some meat on the bones, as we said last time, with some specific proposals. I think they've shown the, you know, the ability here just in the last couple of weeks and what they've been able to do with the, with the Pacific Symphony Concert, and that's only with a couple of weeks' effort. This is, this is obviously a bigger thing, and the Arts Master Plan is a much, is a much bigger endeavor, but I think this gives them the, a little bit of breathing room, the opportunity to come back with, to us with the, with the Master Plan and coming up with some other private opportunities to help sponsor the arts in town. And I know that their intent is to get that Master Plan, not wait two years to get the Master Plan to us, but get it to us hopefully before the end of the year here.
Very good.
I'll second that motion.
All right, Mr. Pieter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a long discussion with Mr. Selig earlier this afternoon, and I am very much inclined not to support this because I've seen actually no progress towards, not towards getting rid of the arts, which is never the intent, but the effort seems to have gotten nowhere as far as raising private funds or switching over from public to private funding for this. And I met with the chairman and vice chairman of the Arts Commission, you know, in January after I got elected, and, and so it's been a year and a half plus and seen no progress. But based on our new chairwoman of the Arts Commission, Lynn Selig, and the, already the progress that she's made raising money, and also the, the concept of becoming like the library, friends at the library, we're going to have a private fundraising arm, so to speak, and the city's authorized the ability to get in there and hire a developer or somebody to help raise funds. I'm going to support this because I do like the arts, but it's a very measured support that I would gladly yank phase four from if there's no, you know, good progress in this next year. So I guess it's one of those government moves very slow and volunteers and government move even slower. So I will put my patients on the shelf and hope for the best that we can gradually move this over to the private sector, and I will support the motion tonight.
Mayor Protem. Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you. Tim, just for clarification, if you look on the budget proposal, says the Arts Commission tends to use these funds to hire a project manager.
Correct.
How, which funds?
Council Policy I-13 funds, Public Art and Cultural Facilities Fund.
That's the piece we get from development, 2%, right?
Correct.
Now, I'm looking at the graphite below it, and I guess I'm a little confused. The project coordinator is which line item? There's a project management, is that the person?
Project management is the arts agency that will handle the project, and the second question you had was, I'm sorry. Actually, that's the fee that the project manager charges for the total project?
Is there a line item somewhere just for the project coordinator referenced in that sentence I asked about?
No, that... Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's the same thing. I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, that's what I was asking. So it's only 35 grand.
Correct.
That's a pay the expert essentially. Because I know in the past, we were talking about someone who's basically a salaried employee, but this is a lot different than a salaried employee.
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tim Muldoon, that, you're right, and that's a discussion that would come forward in the Arts Master Plan, and that person might work for the Arts Foundation. This is just the coordinator for this Sculpture Garden, this phase?
Not that it's a study session, but I would support this. I mean, it's a no-brainer, but I would not support someone when he could just have a management team do a couple, you know, projects here or there.
Understood. Thank you.
And a couple of comments I would like to make. First of all, thank you, Tim, for the good presentation, and to the members of the Arts Commission sitting out there, I'm very grateful that, notwithstanding Mr. Pieter's comments, I think, in my opinion, there's been a lot of progress made. There's certainly, as much as we've been talking about it, at least I know I have and members of the council have for the last 18 months, there really has been dramatic move forward to really add to the conversation, the private funding aspect. And I don't personally hear any resistance to that. It's more of an embracement of that being a fundamental part of our arts and culture program going forward. So I'm very appreciative and commend the Arts Commission, past and present, for their efforts to move steadily in this direction. And I will look forward to the report back on the Master Plan and look forward to some interesting new concepts. And Mr. Pieter, you mentioned the library, and I think we've all been mentioning that that is a, thanks to your leadership too, Tim, a very successful model where you have the board, the Board of, Library Board of Trustees, which is equivalent to the Arts Commission in terms of the appointed, council-appointed members. There's the Library Foundation, which is very, very successful in bringing in private donations, and then there's the Friends of the Library. So there's a solution residing in that same template of organizational structure for the Arts Commission, and I look forward to seeing how that plays out. And again, let me just say, just while in two short weeks, on the Concert on the Green for the symphony, that came about, the Pacific Symphony, because of one of our new members on the Arts Commission, Mr. Kerr, has facilitated that, and it really is tremendous. But just the short two weeks of fundraising offsets, actually, that was general fund money that was going to be and is still paying for that. So the more money that comes in offsets general fund money. So it's all good, headed in the right direction. I commend the good, hard work that you're all doing in your leadership, and I look forward to more good results in the future, and I intend to support. So let's call for the vote.
Motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Madam Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
And so we are adjourned. If anybody came after we came later this evening, we dealt with item number 20 earlier. We moved it forward on the agenda. And is there anyone here that would like just briefly to explain what happened, but we did already take action? Mr. City Attorney, would you mind just briefly giving just a report on what happened for anyone who came after we took action on item 20, since it was out of order?
Yes, just briefly. Give me just a moment. So the council decided to go with the third option from the July 26 meeting, which was to move forward with what Councilman Curry's original proposal was, and that's what will be on the charter. And as far as who was designated as the people to write the ballot arguments, it was Councilmember Muldoon, Councilmember Pieter, Mayor Dixon...
Mr. O'Neill.
Mr. Will O'Neill.
Carolyn.
Carolyn. And then they're going to refer the certificates of participation and lease revenue issue to the Finance Committee for consideration of whether or not an ordinance should be adopted as an interim measure that would go through potentially 2018, kind of hold that gap, where then potentially consider it in 2018, on the 2018 ballot.
Okay, thank you very much.
Does that sound accurate?
Yes, thank you very much. Okay. We are adjourned.